All right. Well, welcome to the City of Iowa City Work Session for March 7, 2023. It is 4:00 PM, and we have some interesting things on our agenda that we've been waiting for. Item one is the Johnson County Child Care Wage Supplement Program Presentation. And there are a slew of partners that will be presented today. And so I'll have you all introduce yourselves, but I think we're going to be starting with Jennifer, Jennifer Banta, welcome.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your time and attention for this wage enhancement program. So I wanted to start out, I know that I've spoken to some of you in the past at the joint meeting, but I wanted to start out with giving you a little bit of history about the Child Care Coalition. So in 2019, a group of 65 of us gathered in Merge, that was pre-COVID, where we felt comfortable being 65 in Merge. But we came together to discuss how we could increase access to high-quality, affordable childcare. And really, when I put out the call for this meeting, I thought maybe 10, 15 folks would show up. We packed the room, and we had so many folks there from the childcare industry. We had government officials, we had concerned citizens, parents. And so we were all focused on finding solutions to the childcare problem. Well, you all know what happened next. A few short months later, COVID hit, the pandemic hit, and we had to pivot. And what we did during that pivot was we started meeting weekly. Megan was part of those calls, the school district, childcare providers. We all started meeting to discuss what the major issues of the day were. Sometimes it was finding whole milk, sometimes it was finding masks or disinfectant. But what really came out of those meetings was that we really started to build trust. And there were a lot of people at the table, a lot of different groups at the table, that were all focused on how can we support working families and children during this time? So in the summer of 2021, we got back together at Open Heartland to discuss what our next steps could be and where we should focus our energy. And at that meeting, we really decided that we needed to focus on building up that childcare workforce. So we wanted to also strengthen our business partnerships and investment from the business community, and we wanted to build that pipeline of childcare workers and childcare entrepreneurs, and really promote the early education industry as a valued profession. And I think at the end of the day, what we decided was that to do all of those things, what we needed to focus on was increasing wages of our childcare workforce. And you'll hear later some of the really staggering statistics around what the childcare workforce currently makes and how it's not really a living wage in any stretch of the imagination. So that's why we decided to focus on that. So I have a group of amazing coalition builders behind me. They are all individually a force to be reckoned with. So bringing them all together to focus their energy and attention on this has really been one of the major joys of my career so far. So we have Missy Forbes from Forests who worked hard to develop an Earn and Learn Program for English language learners in partnership with Kirkwood Community College. She also worked with Kirkwood on developing a high school childcare development academy with the Iowa City School District. Lynette Jacoby and Lori Nash from Johnson County Social Services worked alongside Sam Turnbell from Johnson County Empowerment to survey 43 childcare centers and gather valuable information that helped us inform this project. And you'll be hearing from her, from Lynette, later about that. At the end of the day, we came to realize that we really needed to focus on increasing wages for our childcare workers, but we didn't know how that would be financially sustainable. So Jaclyn Flegel from the City of Iowa City helped us work on those financial models to really calculate out and do the math, which is not my strong suit, and figure out how we can make this project sustainable for the long term. And then, of course, we had Shelley Mahary, who is hosting the fund through the Community Foundation and has given us the support we need to develop that fund. And then Lisa Williams from the School Board, who is focused on wraparound care for our preschoolers, which is also a very important project. And then lastly, Katie Gerlach, who joined the team from Better Together 2030 to help kind of project manage and then continue the fundraising process for us. So I'm excited for you all to hear about the Wage Enhancement Program and the incredible collaboration, community collaboration that has really gotten this project launched. And I know that this awesome group of women, we've all felt the sting of childcare in our past, and we feel very committed individually and as a group to address this issue for working families in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lynette Jacoby, so she can tell you more about the data that she collected.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us today. So I have the task of talking with you about the data, which can sometimes be a yawn or right? But this is some really compelling information. And the one thing about the data behind childcare is that it's there. We have a lot of raw data that helps make our point for us. The data really speaks for itself in terms of need, our need for quality, accessible, and affordable care in our community. I want to talk to you a little bit about the specific data points for Johnson County. In Johnson County, we know that 73% of all families with children under the age of six have all parents in the workforce. The state of Iowa consistently is a leader in the nation in terms of having all parents in the workforce. We also know that we have over 22,000 children in Johnson County under the age of 12, yet we only have a mere 9,000 and some change of childcare spaces available to serve those children. We continue to see a slide in the number of slots available. So last year alone, we lost over 400 childcare slots in Johnson County, which was a 12%, and we had a 12% decrease in childcare programs within the last five years. The good news behind that, if you can find good news, is that slide is slowing down. Just in 2014 to 2019, there were a decrease of 24% loss in childcare centers during that five-year period. So we have seen a slowing, but unfortunately, it continues to decline. We also, whoops, here we go. We also know that childcare professionals are the lowest-paid workers of any track profession. And keeping in mind, this data is specific to Johnson County. So Johnson County childcare workers make, on average, $11.16 per hour, just around $23,000 annually in Johnson County. So the cost of care in Johnson County is the highest in the state of Iowa. It's 32% higher than the state average of $214. In Johnson County, that cost of care is just over $282 a week, for a total of $14,705. So the impact on a family in Johnson County, a family earning the area median income, which is around $100,000, would spend about 15% of their income to cover care for one child, an infant. So you can imagine what that would, what that percent of their income would be if they had two children, or if they are a lower-income family earning much less than the area median income. It almost puts childcare, or does put childcare, out of reach for many households. Just in the last year, infant care increased 11% in Johnson County and 19% over the last five years. We know that affordable care is considered no more than 7% of a household income. So we certainly are far beyond that. So as we look at the cost of childcare for a family of two or two children, if there was an infant and a toddler in the home, the weekly monthly cost of care would be just over $2,000 for an annual cost of over $26,000. This was two and a half times the cost of college tuition for resident in-state tuition at the University of Iowa. So as we began to address this at the county and looked at utilizing our ARPA funds, investing in the childcare crisis within our community, we thought it was really critical that we surveyed childcare centers and speak with directors to obtain feedback on what they saw as the biggest needs, and also to get some current information on the state of care in terms of availability, who the centers were serving, how many staff openings they had, how many classrooms were closed due to insufficient staff, how many centers were accepting state childcare assistance, to what degree were they accepting state childcare assistance. So we launched into a pretty lengthy survey with these childcare centers to gather all that information, to make sure that we were making the most meaningful investment with our one-time ARPA funds. So Lori Nash is going to share with you the outcome of our survey and the results that we gathered through that process.
Welcome.
All right, thank you. So I also have data, and I'm going to try to spice it up a little bit, but it's data. So we identified, we looked at the Department of Human Services and identified all of the licensed childcare in Johnson County. We took out 30 before-and-after-school-only programs, because those are only offered before and after school for school-age kids, and we know that infant care is a huge need. So that left us with 52 licensed childcare programs in Johnson County. We called every single one of them, and we were able to speak with 42 out of the 52. So we had a pretty good rate, we had 81% of the programs that we actually spoke with. We had 43 questions that we asked, and our interviews averaged about 30 minutes, with some of them being, you know, 15 and some of them being over an hour long. We found that doing the interviews in person helped us to clarify questions and also allowed them to ask us questions. So we feel like we got really good data because we were able to clarify and make sure that we were being consistent with all of the folks that we spoke with. So what we found, and I know that when this changed fonts, we got a little funky here. What we found was that of the programs that we surveyed, they have the capacity for 4,254 students, kids. And that ranged from very small centers that have a licensed capacity of 20 up to large centers with a licensed capacity of 297. So there's a lot of variety in what type of childcare is available. When we pulled out preschool-only, so just, you know, two and a half, three hours a day, that left us with a full-time capacity of just over 4,000 slots. Now, when we look at how childcare centers operate, not all of them want to enroll up to their full-licensed capacity. I kind of liken it to when we applied for a mortgage, they said, you're eligible for this much of a mortgage, and we said, we can't afford that much, right? So this is what we say we can do. And that's what these programs have had to do. They've had to say, you know, I know legally we're licensed for this much, but that's not what we're able to do and still provide high-quality care. So we looked then at how many slots were filled and what is their idea of being full at what point? So what we found was that, in total, including preschool, there were 2,949 slots that were available for full-time care, or for all care. Full-time was 2,797 filled slots. In addition, there were 1,240 open slots. There are lots of reasons that slots are open, and we'll kind of talk about that a little bit. The difference between all of the slots and just full-time is just 217 slots, so it's not a huge, huge difference. We have waitlists, and those are a little much. We have, of the total 42 programs, over 1,800 students on a waitlist. Now, families might be on a waitlist at more than one center. So that does not necessarily mean that we have that many actual children, but that is getting close to the need. That's how many our waitlist is. Of those, five programs have waitlists of 100 students or more. Those five programs account for just over $1,100, or 1,100 students on that waitlist. We had 30 programs that had waitlists of less than 100, totaling 699. So again, we've got some really big centers with really big waiting lists, and we have some other smaller programs. So what we see here then is the shortage. This looks at full-time slots, ooh, this looks at full-time slots. So right now, we have 1,240 open slots in our childcare. We have a waitlist of 1,858. What we found is that if we look at the open slots and the available slots, we actually have 618 too few slots in the community to serve families. So on the bottom, if we filled all the empty slots, that would be 1,240. There's still 618 that would not be able to participate because there aren't slots. Part of the reason that slots are open is because there are over 100 full-time staff in these 42 childcare centers in Johnson County, and another 66 part-time staff openings. So that's a lot of staff that programs are waiting for. And as you know, childcare works off of ratios. So if you don't have a staff in the room, you have to have fewer children. The fewer staff, the fewer children you're able to serve. So I'm going to try to talk through this one now. If all of the current empty slots are filled, it leaves us with a waitlist of 618 kids. However, some of those 1,240 can't be filled because we don't have enough staff. So if we look at our actual capacity right now, we have the capacity to serve 710 kids, which leaves 1,148 not served. So even filling all of those empty positions isn't going to address the entire waitlist, but it sure makes a big difference. As Lynette and Jenny alluded to earlier, wages in childcare are low. We looked at average wages for classroom assistants, associates, and then for lead classroom teachers. At the top, you can see starting average and maximum, and then at the bottom, you can see the wage ranges. So starting wage for a classroom associate is anywhere from $10 an hour to $15.75 an When you look at the maximum range for a lead classroom teacher, that goes all the way from $11 an hour to $35 an hour. Now, that $35 an hour seems like a whole lot, but it's important to note, well, relatively speaking, right? But it's important to note that most of those classroom teachers, if not all, who are making a greater wage are also the center director. And so many programs, the center director is also a classroom teacher because they're short-staffed and have to have them in the classroom. We asked whether or not programs had raised their wages in the past year, because we know that many programs did as a result of the pandemic and inability to keep staff. 35 of the centers had raised their starting wages in the past year. It averaged about $1.48 an hour were those raises. The increases were anywhere from 50 cents an hour to $4 an hour, for those who did it, who gave us that information. Others said they increased it anywhere from 8% to 12%. So there were already increases, and we still had a great staff shortage. Most of the programs just couldn't afford to do additional increases. So then, let's think about tuition, because Lynette talked about that a little bit. You can see here infant tuition is greater than a four- or five-year-old. Some programs bill weekly, some programs bill monthly. That's why there are two charts on here. But weekly average is pretty high for an infant. For those billed weekly, it's $293.22 a week. For those billed monthly, it's just over $1,200 a month. That is not very attainable for many folks in our community. And if you think about individuals who themselves are making $15 an hour at Target, or, you know, $18 an hour in some of the other better-paying jobs that we have, this is just not attainable. Some families are eligible for childcare assistance, and the state just increased eligibility for childcare assistance. So on March 1 of this year, eligibility increased from 145% of the federal poverty level to 155% of the federal poverty level. And I had my data, I will tell you what that means for a family of four. I had that, and I don't. The childcare reimbursement rates do not get to what we need in order to pay the programs that are in our community. So, for example, for a regular childcare center who is not in a quality demonstration program, they would be reimbursed $232.10 a week. And this is an increase that just happened March 1. So we're really excited about it. The rates went up, but it's still less than what the market rate is for childcare in Johnson County. And then if you want to look at high-quality childcare, so programs that are in the quality rating system at a level five, they're getting higher reimbursement, up to $240 a week. However, they're usually the ones that cost more as well. And there's not necessarily a correlation between cost of care and quality of care, but there is some expense involved in being part of a quality demonstration program. One of the things that we know is that children in families with lower incomes do much better in higher-quality programs. All kids do better in higher-quality programs, but for children of lower incomes, the difference is much more noticeable. For those kids, there's a big difference in the outcomes, in learning social emotional skills, and in being ready for kindergarten.
All right, can I interrupt just for a moment, ask a question? I'm trying to go back in my memory, and isn't it true that with the childcares that do take CCA, that they cannot, and that there's still a gap in the reimbursement cost between what they're getting from the state and then what their operating cost is, or what they're charging for the week? They cannot pass that on to their full paying, right? So they're absorbing that cost, is that correct?
So that just changed July 1 of 2022.
Okay.
There was new legislation that does allow childcare centers to pass on some of that cost to families. Most of the childcare centers that we surveyed said they were not planning on doing that because they recognize that if families could afford to pay childcare in the first place, they probably were not eligible for childcare assistance. And that it's a burden on families and makes it really difficult. We did ask about that, and we asked about plans to do that. As we get into our program a little bit, there'll be additional opportunities to talk about that, but that is one of the things that we are trying to avoid. So when we talk about our wage incentive program, it's programs that are not passing those costs on to families.
Thank you.
So when we look in Johnson County, we have 32 centers that accept childcare assistance, so 32 out of the 42 that we spoke with. Of those, 16 have caps on the amount of childcare assistance, the number of students with childcare assistance, who they will provide the number of students with childcare assistance who they will provide services to. The caps go from anywhere from one student per classroom. Some of the programs only offer childcare assistance for the staff who work at that childcare center. And some of them will have higher caps, especially if they have access to other state, city, and federal funding. The highest cap that we heard was 30%. But that is a program that had a lot of access. Some programs don't have a formal cap, but they said they kind of keep an eye on it. You know, they manage it as they go. But a very real issue is that it is hard to find childcare for children on state childcare assistance. And we have enough of a demand in our community that if a center does not want to do that, they can usually still be pretty full. So one of the things that we're trying to do is also incentivize programs to take more kids on childcare assistance. All right, so we did talk about solutions. Missy Forbes from 4C's is going to come up unless there are other questions for me. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me. So these, again, are the partners involved in the Wage Enhancement Program, and I will just kind of walk you all through what we're doing. What we want to do is we want to give $2 an hour to qualifying employees on top of what they already make. So we kind of broke down the numbers, and it's around a 17% raise. So if you all can imagine what that looks like, if you were to get a 17% raise, we're hoping that it has a lot of impact to the low-wage earners that are working in these programs. These are the requirements for who qualifies, and I won't read through all of them. But, you know, Lori talked about quality. And that's what we want to see centers that are participating in those quality rating systems so that the kids that they're working with have exposure to the quality. The hourly minimum wage is no less than the county that's set forth. And then, as Lori talked about, that not maintaining that 20% cap. We also really want to make sure that the centers are also taking CCA at the lower, the zero, the infant care is hard to sometimes get, take CCA for that. So we really want to focus on those programs that are really intentionally taking childcare assistance. And then, I don't know if I go to the next one, the staff. So we are looking for those teacher, classroom teachers that are working full-time, at least 32 hours a week, and that are year-round employees. Consistency of care is really important also. So, and that they earn less than $23 an hour. And again, that's a classroom teacher, an assistant, a floater, somebody who's consistently working in a classroom at that 32 and up per hour, or, excuse me, per week rate. And then I'm going to turn it over to Shelley to break down the rest of the info.
Thank you. Hello, good afternoon. I'm Shelley Mahary.
Welcome.
From the Community Foundation of Johnson County, how the collaboration will really work is we're really wanting Johnson County to really lean in to the importance that childcare plays in our economy. We are wanting to invite investment from City of Iowa City and Johnson County to provide seed money of investment of $250,000 per year to the fund that operates the Childcare Solutions Program for three years, which totals $750,000. We're also reaching out to the business community, knowing that a vital workforce depends directly on quality childcare being available in our community. That investment is $150 per year per employee to sponsor the program for their community. And this is also part of the work of the Better Together 2030 program, which serves as the liaison to the business community. The Community Foundation of Johnson County will hold a fund for this work, and I'll explain a little bit more of that in just a moment. But contributions that the business community do make to this fund could be charitable in nature to them, since this is a program that's supporting the work all across Johnson County. And the fund is also under the overall umbrella of Better Together 2030. We have several funds that we are holding at the Community Foundation, really aligning lots of good strategy, lots of good work, under the umbrella of Better Together 2030. Johnson County Social Services will be working with the providers to pay the supplemental wages to the employees. And our good partners at 4C's of Johnson County will work with the childcare centers and in-home providers to educate them about the program and get them on board. So just a quick note about the fund at the Community Foundation of Johnson County. It is a fund that can take in both public funds and private funds to be used specifically for this program. If there was ever a requirement that funds, say, for Iowa City, funds given in Iowa City are held separately and accounted for separately, we could certainly accomplish that. We act as a third-party fiduciary. So we oversee the funds and make sure that the monies going out of the funds are used only in the manner that was intended by the fund. And there's a little bit of language there for you to have as well, just about how the agreement was written up for the fund. The intended fund is really expected to be long-term. We want to lean into the importance of childcare in Johnson County, not only for just this Wage Enhancement Program, but thinking strategically long-term about how we can impact that sector and elevate it as much as we can.
I have one question. The last slide, I think you said Johnson County Social Services will distribute the funds. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Will it go directly to the childcare's provider, the staff? Or will it go to the center?
So from the Community Foundation's fund, it would go to Johnson County. From there, it'll be distributed directly to the centers. Well, actually, to the individual, to the centers, yes.
To the centers, great, thanks. That was it.
Great. And with that, I get to turn it over to our fearless leader of Better Together 2030, Katie Gerlach.
Great. Welcome.
Thanks for having us. So as Shelley mentioned, we entered into the agreement with the Community Foundation opening the Childcare Coalition Charitable Giving Fund. And the goal would be that it has a broad intent to serve all of the childcare goals outlined in the Better Together, all envisioned. But this is a great first project to kick us off. We are undergoing a fundraising campaign with private employers. So we're asking employers to contribute to the program at a rate of $150 per employee annually to the fund. So we've got seven employers committed, including one large employer. And it's tax-deductible to employers, so that's a benefit of private business making contributions. The one downfall I would say we have in Johnson County, so this program's working really well in Hamilton County, we have a lot of nonprofit employers, so they can't necessarily take advantage of the tax deduction. But that hasn't stopped all of our investors so far. And we know that we're going to continue to grow interest in the program. We also know that this is an incredible need throughout workforce issues that come up. The Business Partnership and Iowa City Area Development are consistently hearing about workforce issues across the county. And childcare is one of those issues that continues to rise to the top of workforce. So we have a beautiful spreadsheet designed by Jaclyn from the City of Iowa City. And this isn't one that you can, that we can manipulate here, but we do have a spreadsheet that she's created for us with different formulas so we can do some targeting and projections. And so the way that I froze this one is at 135 childcare employees, just a best estimate at the first year. And that would be an annual cost of $513,000 for the program. So that would assume that the employee would work 35 hours per week. And then we would calculate the total supplement at $2 per hour. But then we would also include FICA. So we're contributing .153 for every $2 spent. And that means that there's no cost to the employer to participate in the program. The Community Foundation fee with Better Together projects, the administration fees have been cut in half by the Community Foundation. And so that's an incredible contribution of that group. And so based on the amount in the fund, that's what that is. So if it's 265,000 in there, then we're going to pay $3,000 in administration fees. And right now, the county has not assessed any or made a determination that they would need to have any funding to administer this program. Of course, we want it to be incredibly successful and grow to the point where they will need staff to operate it. But at this point, they have current staffing to be able to do so. Looking at the financial stability of this program and future planning, we're hoping to launch this program this year. It's, we've already received our first applications. We have secured county funding, and we also have empowerment funds. So we'd like to get this going. We know that there's an urgency to this issue, and so we are reviewing the first applications starting next week. So we're hoping to get the City of Iowa City's funds as well. We'll expend the EC Iowa funds. And depending on the ARPA procedures per municipality, I know Johnson County and Iowa City each have different procedures for their ARPA funds. We can determine how to segregate those funds and operate those. We'd like to have the City of Iowa City's funds deposited at the Community Foundation to continue to grow so that we can continue to invest and grow this whole solutions fund. We're hoping that the initial pilot year in 2024, we're going to see success. Part of the participation in the program requires data. So each childcare center has to report back. And we're going to have incredible data to report annually, and we'll have very specific data. So the employees have waivers, the centers have waivers, and we'll be able to really see the metrics and be able to report on the outcomes of this program. We'll continue fundraising with private businesses into the fund, which should grow our investments and returns, hoping the market improves. We know that program data collection will continue. And in 2026, we know that all ARPA funds need to be expended. And by then, we're hoping that we have such an annual investment from the private business community, including the City of Iowa City as an employer at that point, the county as an employer, University of Iowa as an employer. We will have those funds needed to be able to continue to operate this program. So, but we know in 2027 and beyond and towards 2030, Johnson County will lead the region and the country in childcare investment and initiatives. So I can answer any questions you have, or we can kind of, Jenny's going to come up and conclude for us. And then we'd be happy to answer any ongoing questions.
I have one question, sorry, Katie. I have a question about the the $250,000 per year for three years, the ARPA funds, which I completely get. Is that representative of the employees? Or is this a separate? I guess I'm just thinking of a mechanism of, is this representing like the 150 per employee for the city? No, that would be, that's the sustainability piece.
We'll be back in 2026 for that.
Okay, so this is just
Under that metric, our contribution would be lower.
Okay.
Yeah. This is just recognizing that we have ARPA funds, and we've established childcare as one of our ARPA priorities.
And then I have one other question, and it may be, you're fine to say, let's hold that, and it can be later. It seems to me that definitely this program is to incentivize retention above and be all, and to help professionalize the profession, really. Pay them what they're worth, and this is a really good start. Has there been discussion in looking at it maybe through the 2030 lens of growing the pipeline so that it can actually be incentivizing people to get into the profession and to help with the training that I know was sort of brought in early on to talk about measures that have happened? Because it seems like we're still stuck with those slots. There's a gap, even if we haven't gotten, even if we're helping those who are still in the profession to be able to. But, so is that kind of part of the conversation too?
Yeah, I can let Missy and Jenny speak more to that, but that's also continued work as part of the Coalition. 4C's has also worked with Kirkwood to develop a program. And again, starting with, this starting with centers, but we want to expand this to in-home providers as well as the program continues to grow. We want to continue to expand it across the childcare workforce. And so we just need to pilot it this year and see how the centers are because it's easier to operate on the, kind of, track the data that way. But this will continue to grow, and I know that all of our partners in this coalition are continuing to work on upskilling in childcare as a profession and growing that industry. But recruiting people into that industry, there's even a high school program that they've been working on. Wages continue to come up as the reason, and so this was our first primary goal to kind of launch into that. And we're really hopeful that it'll work, you know. Said another way, if we need $500,000 to run this program annually for 135 employees, that's only 3,500 employees in Johnson County that we need to get employers to contribute $150 for annually. And that's a very doable goal. I think we can even do beyond that and grow the program.
My question is actually, I think, a good piggyback off of that particular statement. You mentioned that you had seven employers that were bought into this. How many employee contributions are they, between those seven employers, do you have?
So total, that would be 46.
Forty-six, okay.
But the large employer is not included in them.
Gotcha. The other question I have is kind of a, just a contingency question, I suppose. So I'm thinking about a variety of situations that providers could be looking at with this program being introduced. And I'm wondering if you guys have thought about, okay, so how are we going to prevent, you know, bad actors from benefiting from this program in a not-good way, right? If a company is already paying out $2 over that 11, what was it, 16 or something like that per hour, the recommended Johnson County minimum wage, and they decide to cut back $2 in order to receive a $2 increase in wages, do you have anything to prevent that, or what is your plan for that?
I'm really fun to have meetings with. You should see these waivers that people are signing. So there's a lot of requirements on the participants and the centers both. So, you know, we're really contracting with the centers, but we thought it was important that the staff really also understand the obligations of participating in the program and to also hold their employers accountable and have kind of a cycle there. So the staff are actually completing applications and waivers as well, so they understand what their starting wage is at and what it should be. And they're also going to be able to hold their employers accountable. But the data that we're collecting will allow social services staff to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll elaborate on that. That's a very good question. So for reimbursement, centers will submit payroll information for each employee they're seeking reimbursement on. So we'll have where their wage is at, when they started, and then with the $2 wage increase. So we'll have documentation, and that will be required before they can receive reimbursement. So that'll be part of the monthly reimbursement request.
When they start with the company or when they're starting with the program?
When they're starting the program. So we'll have their base wage, and we set the base wage that they're, because we know some centers are already further ahead than others. They've raised wages, others are playing catch-up. But we set that their base wage starting the program had to be a minimum of the county recommended minimum wage at $11.56 an hour. So that way, it's an equal playing field. Everybody has to be there to start out at a minimum. If they're already paying more than that, that's great. Then this program is not intended to backfill the wages that have already been established at centers. This is intended to be supplemental in addition, and that was quite intentional. There's a number of programs. So we replicated and borrowed ideas from other areas, Hamilton County, as Katie had. But one thing that's different about our program versus theirs, those programs are reimbursement based on bonus that's paid out like on a quarterly basis. So for a lot of employees, though the bonus is nice, a lot of them don't tie that to their wages because they don't see it immediately. So for us, it was really critical that we tied this wage enhancement to their actual wage. So they saw it in their paycheck each pay period. And so we're able to track that. Centers, if they have a hard time maybe fronting the money, then instead of requesting reimbursement on a monthly basis, they're able to do that after each pay period. We're leaving that up to the centers, what's best for them. So we should have that covered since they'll be submitting their payroll information. We have a lot of experience at the county through the Social Services Department in terms of grants management. We allocate a number of grants, and so tracking payroll and reimbursing for employee wages is not new for us.
So I guess I just want to make something clear here. My comments here are not in any way signaling any kind of stance against this. I just do think it is kind of an important thing to consider. And I guess my concern is, if we're only tracking the payroll data from the start of the program and not prior to the start of the program, how would you know? of the program and not prior to the start of the program, how would you know if the company has decided to cut back wages and use it as a backfill?
The, the application specifically says that and both the center and the staff member are, are certifying that. And we also have the data collected from those centers that, that Lori has the luminous records of.
Awesome.
Yes, we have that pilot part, when we first did the very first, we have each center and what their starting wages for each one. So we can compare, compare back to what they told us in September and ensure that that's.
Awesome. Thank you.
And also, the, the process for this is that each, a center will apply. So we've received six applications so far. We just opened it up, seven now. So once we go through that, identify eligible centers and then they receive notification that they're eligible, then they'll be invited to have their eligible staff members, those that are eligible or, or working 32 hours or more a week, then they can too submit an application and they'll all come through the center. That application includes the individual's wage. So the employee themselves is writing down their current wage prior to the wage enhancement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let Jenny come up and close out and then all of us are available for questions.
Thank you.
So thank you for those questions. It's almost as if you crawled inside of our brains and we have been meeting weekly to discuss this and we have just thrown every scenario out there and tried to figure out how to break this. So we always encourage questions like that because it just makes it a better product at the end. So as we talked about at the very beginning, our goal is to increase access to affordable, high-quality, high-quality, high-quality childcare. And so we feel very confident that addressing the childcare workforce shortage is one of the many important steps that we're going to need to take to get there. As you mentioned, I think we talked a little bit earlier about building the workforce pipeline is that first step and we have really been focusing on that for a few years now. But, you know, we know that primarily women are in this childcare workforce and if we're only paying them $23,000 a year, it doesn't feel good for me as a woman to not really tackle this wage issue for women who are in this workforce. So this has been, you know, kind of a passion project for all of us and, you know, we really need to address these, these wages. So by encouraging more people to enter into that workforce, we're hoping that we can provide that living wage for folks and we believe that that will help us increase access and improve quality. And so one of the things you also asked about is, you know, building that pipeline. I'm also on the state Early Childhood Iowa Board and we just discussed in our last board meeting last week, all of the different funding sources that are being pushed into that pipeline development. So they're going to now fund statewide teach program and we can tell you all about that, but it's funding for childcare training. So I am always on the lookout for those dollars at the state level and the federal level and how can we bring those back into our community to really support childcare. So I just want to also end, I, I was just saying this the other day, childcare really is a win-win-win. So if you figure out how to increase access to childcare and how to increase wages, you are providing stable childcare for working parents. You are providing workers for our area employers who are not having to leave because of interruptions in childcare or leave after they've had their second baby because they can't afford it anymore. You're providing our workers with a living wage that they can feel good about and they can feel like they're in a profession that is valued in our community. And then lastly, as we all know, and I think there's nobody in here that would argue with this, our children deserve this. They deserve high-quality childcare and a safe place to be and not, you know, in situations that are less than ideal. So with that, I just want to remind you this, this $2 an hour increase equates to a 17% raise and that means 4,160 extra dollars a year. That's not a lot. I would like it to be $10 an hour, but we're starting here and I just hope that we can commit to this as a community, not just government, but also the business community investing in this. And I think that that is the beauty of this model. So our whole community is going to get involved. So I appreciate your time and encourage your questions.
I have a few. Thank you everyone for all your work on this and the, I think this, what you presented today really shows how much thought and effort that you've put into it. So thank you. My first question is just relating to the conversations that you maybe have had with employers and getting those on board and what has been successful? If you've had enough conversations to kind of have a sense of what really helps them buy in to participation in this?
Yes. So as we alluded to earlier, our employers are really struggling for workforce. And I know I've had multiple conversations in my past role at the Business Partnership. I spent a lot of time with employers that were really wanting to grow their business, but they couldn't because they couldn't find employees or their favorite, best employee had to quit because they had a second baby or, or stories like that. So when we go in and we talk about this, they are really interested and they like this public-private partnership model because they know they need to do something. And a lot of times I get phone calls, I'm going to start a childcare center in my business. Okay, well, that's problematic. That's not just easy. You don't just, you know, put out some cots and, you know, bring in the kids, right? So this is an option for them that is really something that they can pay into and it's for the betterment of the workforce that are located right here in Johnson County. I will tell you that I was asked to come up to Cedar Rapids to participate in a conversation with their business community. They're looking at this model. I've gotten multiple phone calls from other communities that are interested. They saw in the DI or they saw, you know, an article about this and they're really interested in figuring this out for their communities too. So I think again, we're, we're leading in this. So some of the challenges that our employers are facing when thinking about investing in this, does it come out of the HR budget? Does it come out of the foundation? Does it come out of, you know, where does the money come from? So those are some of the conversations that we talk about. The other thing that our community has a large number of nonprofits. So, you know, again, as our, you know, state legislature kind of cuts the budgets for our major employer in town, it's a little bit harder for them to justify paying into this program. But we're continuing to meet with those employers and they're very excited about this. We've just started and we've already got seven plus this one large employer locally that have invested. We have multiple meetings set up down the road that I think people will be jumping in.
I have a quick question and piggyback off that, that maybe is for staff, which is as far as where the money can come from. Can we find some way for like the employee benefits levy to pay for this or, just think about it? I, I realize that the, it looked like the scope would maybe be more closer to $100,000 than 250 on an ongoing basis. Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. And my, and my understanding would be that the ARPA contribution of 750 would be our three-year contribution and then in year four, we would start the 150 or whatever that figure is at that time contribution, but we'll look at the levy.
Now, it may be a tougher question. With the time and care that you took in speaking with all of the different centers and providers and feedback and information that you received from them, and you mentioned Lisa Williams was involved in the, the coalition. So I imagine you're aware, we have a pending request, as do all the municipalities, to fund the wraparound services for four-year-old pre-K for the district, for the Iowa City Community School District. So do you have a sense, at, at our last work session, I'd ask the question of, you know, kind of what feedback they're getting from providers? And we'd ask that at the joint entities meeting as well and I'd hope maybe there'd been some additional conversations. But it sounds like from the district to providers, there's not much communication. So do you have a sense of how that program or that ask might impact kind of the landscape that we're talking about here?
Yeah, so there's, if the school district decides to bring four-year-old preschool into the district and provide wraparound care within the school district, that will be very problematic for our local childcare centers. As you saw up there, they make, they make, unfortunately, they make money on four-year-olds and they lose money on that newborn. So it has been a struggle to kind of find a middle ground that will work for both the, the school district and our childcare providers. And I'm sure with continued conversations that we will get there. So there are many models out there that we can look at that would address the issue of providing that, that wraparound care for the four-year-old from those childcare centers, maybe bringing a school district employee into the center to provide the curriculum in the center, maybe training one of the center directors to, to do the curriculum, the Iowa City School District curriculum within their center for them. So there's a lot of different models and Lisa and Matt, they're great partners, so we will, we'll find a solution, I think. And I just also want to make the comment that it doesn't have to be either or. This program actually will also help subsidize the wages of childcare centers that are providing that four-year-old preschool. And if the school district then chooses to use those centers for the wraparound care, we can still engage in that and this could be a really nice collaboration in that.
I, I just thought of another question. Could you talk more to the decision to, as I understand it, sort of exclude in-home services in more prioritized, larger centers? The, the reason I ask is I grew up with one in my home. My parents had a daycare up until 2010 or 11, right next to my bedroom. And so the, the initial thing that I think about is, okay, well, if we're raising the wages of folks that are working at larger, more well-established, you know, companies, it's going to make the, the talent pool for, you know, smaller companies that are out of people's homes, a lot less desirable. And it might be much harder for those companies to simply exist or have talent. So I'm, I'm kind of wondering what your thoughts have been about, about that dynamic.
I think you must be listening in on our meetings because yes, we had to start somewhere and we had to start where I think, you know, it was a, a decision we made where we can impact the most number of kids quickly. But that doesn't mean we're not going to do a quick, once we get folks into this program and we have tested it and it's working, you, you probably noticed on one of our slides, the very next group that we're going to expand this to is in-home centers. But we, we need to do the research on what does that look like? Is it a yearly bonus? Is it a quarterly stipend? It, you know, so we decided to focus our energy on this to begin with, but that is coming and we don't intend to disadvantage one type of childcare. We want to be able to serve all of them. These numbers are large and they kind of scared us when we first started talking about them. So we wanted to get, we wanted to get some experience under our belt with the childcare centers and then with a quick follow-up with the, in-homes.
Can you, can you talk to me a little bit about how you've engaged with the, the in-home providers throughout this process of planning?
Well, I think from the very beginning, we've had folks on the coalition that are in-home providers and have gathered their feedback. We also work closely with CCRNR who represents all of the providers, registered or not, in Johnson County and the region. So we have gotten feedback directly from them on this coalition as well too.
Excuse me, so you would be planning to do a survey of, of those in-home providers then? Because you, this other was focused on, on the big providers. So you would do another survey of them to see how many.
Well, I don't want to speak for Johnson County.
I think that ForCes works really closely with in-home providers and, you know, it's their own business, they're setting their own rates. And so we support them in other ways, not that, not with a $2 incentive, but in other ways that they, we kind of pick up some expenses as far as supplies and activities and things like that. So not that it's the same, but I think we're kind of picking up that lift a little bit right now and while we can focus on the centers and see how that goes. So if that's helpful.
All right. Thank you all so much for coming.
My last, I have one final question. What is your timeline? What is, what would be optimal for a decision?
As soon as we can get. So the funding is there from Johnson County. So we're, we're scoring applications on Monday and we're starting. We want Iowa City to be at the table as well, but we know that the problem is urgent and we need to, to get going and this first quarter was our goal. And so we've, we've met our goal and we're gonna, we're gonna get going and we're just gonna continue to build the coalition and build the fund with those that want to join.
Great. Last question. Thank you all for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Yes.
Mayor, before you move on to the next item, I thought I'd just share a tentative plan, at least in my mind, and see if it's consistent with what you're thinking. So the presentation you had tonight followed the one from your last work session from the school district on the, on the four-year-old wraparound proposal. I, I think it would be a, a good idea to give yourself an opportunity to discuss both of those at the same time and how you want to move forward with, with one or either. So at your next work session, I was gonna place an item with both the Wage Supplement Program and the Four-Year-Old Proposal from the School District on that. No presentation, just an opportunity for you to discuss and if you're comfortable at that time, you can direct staff to move forward with one or the other or both. And if you decide that you've got questions that are unanswered that, that need to be resolved, we can invite either one of the groups back in for future discussions. Does it sound okay?
Yes.
One other item is that the charitable giving fund at the Community Foundation, the intent and the purpose is written broad enough as well that if you'd like to fund an early childhood initiative and that would include maybe the school district better together, we could help kind of shepherd those funds as well.
Thank you.
Jeff, how long will it take once the council gives direction to staff to get to the point of funding to the Community Foundation?
I, I think the ARPA agreement would be, I think we could move pretty expeditiously on that one. The, the school district would be the more complicated one because we need to talk about a revenue source for, for that particular one. But if, if there's, I mean, we've been, I've been working under the assumption that we're going to move forward with this Wage Supplement Program. It's been identified, childcare was identified as a, a priority early on in the ARPA process, all the way back to 2021 and you all have really stressed partnerships and engagement. This seems like it checks those boxes very well. So we can begin to kind of sketch out now what that agreement looks like and be prepared to move forward should you give us that green light. Again, the school district one, just because we would not be using ARPA dollars, we'd have to come up with other revenue sources. This is a bit more complicated and I'd say would take a little bit longer to, to tease out how exactly we're going to fund that in a sustainable way.
Thank you.
So we'll have it on our next work session and have that discussion. All right, we're going to move on to item number two. And that is the strategic, kind of a strategic plan action. Revampen the neighborhood PANG grant program and evaluate discretionary funding for district neighborhood grassroots project. And.
I think I'll start this one off, Mayor, if you don't mind. So in your information packet on March 2nd, you have a memo from Shannon McMahon and Aman Sharif. Both are here to join us this afternoon and are available for your questions. But this follows your strategic plan session in which you identified. But this follows your strategic plan session in which you identified this as a priority. So the PIN grant program is essentially a grant program that has long lived at the city, where we support neighborhood associations in pursuing whatever it is they may deem important for their neighborhood. That could be beautification projects, it could be social gatherings and things of that nature. We've taken a, kind of a relook at the program in relation to your strategic plan, and the memo outlines how we'd like to change things. I'll also note that in the budget proposal before you that you'll be considering in April, there is a $5,000 increase in the PIN grant program. So we'll have some extra funding there to support this effort. So in looking at the time here, I won't go through the memo in detail unless that's what you'd like. And then, again, Shannon and Aman are here to answer any questions you have about their work here.
Well, I do think it's a great opportunity for people in our community that haven't accessed this PIN grant in the past. I do wonder how some of that information is going to just get maybe out to the community members, some of these newer neighborhood associations. So maybe if you all can elaborate on that. Because we know that if it's there, that's great, but how will the word kind of get out and about?
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Shannon McMahon. Aman and I have been talking about how we're going to roll this out a little bit differently in the past. One of the ways that we'd like to make sure that neighborhoods are aware of the PIN grant program and are able to participate is to help neighborhood associations by creating surveys for the residents and making sure those surveys get to the neighborhoods so people have a chance to weigh in on the options that they'd like to see in the PIN grants in their own neighborhoods. And that's one, I think, significant change that we've seen from the past.
And as far as, good afternoon, Aman, Sharif. And just to add to that, we've been organizing a series of regular neighborhood association meetings and stuff, which will be used as a very good venue to connect to PIN grant processes and other things as well. So this will be like a main area that can relay information about the PIN grant as well.
Great. And welcome to both of you.
I just have a question, actually, about the timing of the awards. I see in here that it was, the funding would be made after, available after July 1st of 2023. And I realize that that actually kind of works well within this parameter of this cycle. But I was wondering if there's, I know many neighborhood associations or neighborhoods in general, that summertime and better weather tends to be when somebody, when they want to do their events. And at the same time, they could be awarded in July, and they could keep those until the following June, right? And spend that money then. But a lot of times, especially if they're more nascent associations, they may not be thinking ahead almost 12 months. So I'm just wondering if, like, after this first run, there's the possibility of maybe moving that cycle back a little bit so that you would have the full summer and that they could be awarded that money maybe at the beginning of the summer so that they could expend that money a little bit more upfront?
That is certainly something that we can look at in the future. I think that we'd also like to look at aligning the timing with some other grants that the city has available so that we could maybe piggyback between them to help provide more substantial assistance.
Sure. And for what it's worth, this is me throwing spaghetti on the wall. So you can feel free to poke holes in it, like, and say, well, timing-wise, that doesn't work. But that was what struck me when I was reading. And I was like, I just know that kind of late spring and summer is when events are more desirable. So it just seemed that that might be something to look into.
I think that's also going to be helpful, to have that discretionary funding available so that when something does pop up and we have an inactive neighborhood that would like to participate or have an event, that we may be able to help them out with that.
What's the, what does PIN grant stand for, again?
Program for Improving Neighborhoods.
Okay, great. And is that just general fund money?
Yes, it is.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, I really like the discretionary piece as well. And I would imagine that once you have that in place, you may find, you know, sort of this demand and timeliness question may sort of work itself out. You see when people are coming with requests that hadn't been funded in the larger pot. I thought it was extremely helpful to see the gaps identified and the collaboration with, like, a defined, you know, a city staff sort of sponsor or support person, I think, is really excellent to engage all the different departments and just, you know, the different places in the city where we have a little bit more distributed outreach efforts so to make sure that they're communicating in terms of these opportunities and to the neighborhoods themselves. I like it.
Great. Looks like good planning. Time for this program to have that update and that sort of move on to its next step after experience and gained over the last several years. So thank you for doing the legwork on this.
Well, thanks to you both. Yes, all right. Any other discussion on this item by council? I guess we probably need to, you know, kind of signal any changes to the city manager's office if we're thinking any at this time.
I liked everything in the memo.
Okay.
And these expenditures are at a level that we have the authority to execute. So we don't, this isn't one of the grant programs that comes back to you or we ask you for those individual awards. Because it's part of your strategic plan, we'll report periodically to tell you how it's going and give you examples of the grants that we provide. But we don't need any formal action, Mayor, just as you suggested. If you like the track that we're on, we'll continue to move forward and report back at the appropriate intervals.
Okay. All right. Next item on our agenda is three, clarification of agenda items. I don't know that there's any. All right, we'll move on to four, informational packet discussion. We'll start with February 23rd. We will move on to March 2nd, and we do have IP 5 that we need to discuss, and it's a memo from our deputy city manager. So, yeah, so this is a request for statements of interest for inclusive economic development support for underestimated businesses and entrepreneurs. So, yeah.
I'll just make a quick introduction on this one. It feels like we're moving on the ARPA front pretty well here. We just heard the wonderful presentation on the Wage Supplement Program. You will soon see the nonprofit capital grant program back before you. And this piece is one that I know staff is very excited about. It was the largest chunk of ARPA dollars that we identified through the public input process, and that's $4 million to support underestimated businesses and entrepreneurs in the community. So I'll let the deputy city manager, Redmond Jones, walk you through that memo and our thought process on that. And we welcome your input before we issue that publicly.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Had the pleasure to kind of talk about this. This has been one of the highly anticipated programs. Just the rumor of it has gotten a lot of excitement in the public, and we've had a number of preliminary meetings in the buildup to this with members of the public in anticipation of this program. So it's really exciting to see this starting to come together. So as the city managers shared, I'm here to kind of discuss this request for statement of interest for the inclusive economic development support for underestimated businesses and entrepreneurs, basically BIPOC business support. But our, one of our companies recently did, vendors recently did inclusive economic development plan and recommended that the language be changed to spur more interest in the community. So we've done that. So what we're hoping is that this discussion that we're about to have would get the feedback from the council, give us any suggested changes and any process as we move forward. And hopefully, we can move forward with this next step of the ARPA initiative, rolling this out. So if you can recall, back in 2021, the city council had identified several ARPA funding priorities and strategic investments, and one of those was BIPOC business support. And at that time, we identified $4 million. Staff has looked at and recommend that we expect to see capital interests as well as kind of human support, kind of soft interest, might be things like lending programs and things of that nature. So we expect to see kind of two areas of proposals or concepts, I should say, that come in. And we want to be able to be flexible to handle all those different types of ideas. So we anticipate somewhere around $3 million going towards capitalized projects or things that lend themselves, maybe rehab programs, brick and mortar, maybe even land purchase, things of those natures. And others are maybe more the human aspect of supporting services to help give businesses the abilities to be successful. So we're kind of looking at it that way. Obviously, it depends on what we get in that can change that. And we'll, you know, want to have a process that'll be flexible to be able to adjust the diversity of those types of suggestions and concepts. So that's why the concept of requesting for statements of interest is appealing because it provides that flexibility as well as gives us a really kind of low barrier to entry, gives us the ability, so if there are things or gaps that are missing, that staff can work with those organizations out there to help refine those proposals so that when we do bring them back to city council, they'll be more aligned with being successful should council agree to supporting those. So I just wanted to also kind of capture some of the high-level aspects since this is so well anticipated that the folks tuning into Channel 4 will be able to kind of get an idea of what we're looking at. So looking at the eligibility, first, we're kind of looking at nonprofit and profit organizations. We're trying to be as flexible as possible for all those different types of business type of entities that are interested in supporting these businesses. We're also focused on city-based organizations, and they must be the lead applicant in those, but they don't. We're also encouraging partnerships, and partnerships can come from outsider communities. Could be Corvile, could be folks that are doing the same type of initiatives in other communities, but we wanted to have a focus in Iowa City. So as long as there's a lead partner that is Iowa City-based, we want to see, we want to see those concepts as well. Physical space proposals, obviously, we want that to be located in Iowa City, so we do have that. And we're proposing organizations must have demonstrated some ability. But at the same time, we don't want, if there's a brand-new organization or something that is a new concept that haven't had that experience, staff still wants to sit down with them and help build them, probably provide some technical assistance, depending on what those proposals are, to help them fill those kind of gaps. Maybe even suggest other partners that might be also in the community that can help them fill those gaps to be successful. So that kind of gives us the ability to bring in all those ideas. I think what a statement of interest would look like. Obviously, we would like to have a cover letter, kind of explaining, a general description of what that concept is, the purpose, the benefit, the goals, what we're also very interested in, and how is that going to build community. And this kind of goes in with some of the heart of the ARPA funding, is kind of built around resiliency. What are those things that's going to, you know, help the community become stronger by? And so should we run into another kind of community-wide emergency, then maybe we'll be a little bit more prepared to address it because communities knows how to rely on each other and be stronger, better together, right? So obviously, that's important. Preliminary timeline, the estimated budget, big-picture things, looking for partnerships there, track record, statement of abilities, and statement of work-to-date is also important. And any other information that is successful. So very, you know, it doesn't take a lot to pull that together. We just want to get those ideas in and be able to start the process of working with folks to kind of develop those into some hard proposals that can be brought forward. So I think that was everything. Is there any questions?
Well, I have to say, this is exciting. A long time coming, this proposal here. Johnson County Inclusive Economic Development Plan was, I would say, a real contributor to some of the information that we had to really pull this together. So thanks to everyone that participated in that, and of course, to you in leading this effort as well. The request for statement of interest, my understanding, as you just mentioned, is it allows for flexibility on what projects are really out there. We don't totally know what all, what all the interests will be. And so that, I do appreciate this allowing us to have some flexibility. In your memo, you mentioned that after those statements come in, there'll be a review committee. And I see that you stated that staff and maybe one or two city councillors could be a part of that. And so at some point, I think this council will have to discuss that. I do have interest in being a part of that. One of the, one of the questions that I do have is, did the Johnson County Inclusive Economic Development Plan, I don't fully remember it, I know that we had a presentation here, did it kind of give us what the anticipated needs were? Only because I see that it said that we would expect, it's $4 million for the total award as well as being proposed, but we're expect to award $3 million towards capital needs in nature, as well as one, and then $1 million towards programs, projects, or other proposals aimed at business support services. And so, not that you totally have to answer that, but do you have a rationale for why $3 million and $1 million is there with those separate categories?
Sure. So it did give us some idea of what those type of needs could be. Things like a community kitchen, those are kind of expensive tags, right? So the brick and mortar, purchasing land, I think, you know, we know well that land is not cheap in Iowa City. So we anticipate that if those type of projects come presented to us, that they're going to need more of an infusion to get off, get off the ground. And we're still going to be looking for, you know, leveraging dollars as much as possible. And that's why we really made a real big point to push for partnerships. And it may even be that even partnerships that they haven't identified right now, there may be other partnerships that through this process, we can marry or at least start conversations amongst organizations to try and help those dollars go, you know, a little further. But obviously, support services are going to be just as important, and those are mostly, you know, people-driven. And so we anticipate maybe those might look like loan programs or things that might even be revolving, where the resources can be used over and over, those kind of things. It's just hard to know exactly what we came in. And we have the ability to adjust based on what comes in. So obviously, if more support services concepts come in than the brick and mortar. So obviously, if more support services concepts come in than the brick and mortar, then, you know, we could change those numbers around.
And last question, I know I have councillors ready to respond, which is great. Leveraging, is there a little flexibility because we, I heard Mayor Pro Tim just mention some of those timelines for some programs, funded programs like our CDBG funds, you know, those application opportunities would be passed for this upcoming fiscal '24 year. So will there be some flexibility for people to leverage future money, or is, do they have to spend the money kind of in a quick go-around?
Well, I think we always have to keep our mind on the overall ARPA requirements of spending, which I think is in 2026, if I'm correct, and so we got to keep in mind on that. But I think the way that this is set up is probably going to be phases of aspects of, you know, projects, especially if it's something that might require some engineering or some architectural design or something like that. Obviously, you know, we will want to probably have to work through, maybe even help them get the necessary professional assistance to get those kind of plans together. So there's probably, it's not going to just be a big rush, I don't think, you know, to go, you know, right out the door, but it also probably depends on, you know, what we're presented. Like, a loan program may just be, hey, we establish a loan reserve and we give that money out, and then that program starts running. So it just really kind of depends.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you open up the council discussion, could I make one brief comment about the vernacular? I would really encourage council members to adopt the vernacular of underestimated businesses that has been used here. As you can imagine, we don't want to be exclusionary based on any protected classes. You also probably saw in the memo that there are some references to the Iowa Targeted Small Business Program, which includes not only minority-owned businesses, but businesses that are owned by women or disabled veterans or others with disabilities. We would intend the program to be open to all of those groups, and of course, one of the considerations could be how much the applicant has been underestimated based on their classifications or characteristics and so forth. So I just want to encourage the adoption of that vernacular. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Eric, and thank you, Redmond. And kind of on those lines, as we know, Iowa City has become very diverse over the last few years, and the council and the city over the last few years have been requested many times for informational things that have gone out to be put out in multi-language. Is that a possibility with this program to have information about it as well as the application process be submitted in other languages?
Absolutely, yeah. We've already kind of had some kind of conversations about that. What those languages are, we're still, you know, but yes, certainly.
Good, thank you.
And then is this deadline still 4:00 PM, May 1st, or is that just part of the draft?
So right now, we want to, you know, give about a month and a half for the
People to put their stuff together.
... to be out there. We could, you know, depending on what the council wants to do, we could probably move pretty quickly on getting it out, and May 1st was, you know, is on a Monday and the 1st of the month, so it was a nice, good, clean date, but, you know, depending on if we need to do some more adjusting or whatever, we could, you know, just move that date accordingly.
I have a few questions. I had the benefit of being on the council subcommittee on the capital side, so I think I maybe had a little more transparency into some of the details behind the process. I just have some, a little more detailed questions, maybe. Do you have a sense of how and where, or how you decide how and where, like the publicizing and promoting and sending this out? I think we've all had conversations with people who we think we know are going to be interested, but what's the sort of the, I don't know, intentional way that you intend to do that?
Well, we're getting so much interest, we definitely have a little bit of an email tree already, because, you know, actually, I hadn't, didn't show, didn't give anything out yet, but I had two meetings just leading up to this one, just to say, it's coming, it's coming, and giving them some basics. So I think the word of mouth is going to be also a big piece, but we're definitely going to do our due diligence on the website, and I think there's probably a good case to do a little hand-delivering to some of the folks that I know have already expressed interest, and I know that they're also very interested in doing. So one of the interesting things, almost all the folks that show interest want others to be involved. Like, everyone says, I don't want to be the only one. So I think this is going to, you know, really get out there. So we'll really press for hard on getting that information out.
I would just emphasize the priority that I would personally place on some of those more hands-on interactions, especially with members of our immigrant community or folks that don't speak English. I think, like was mentioned either at last meeting or the meeting prior, sometimes those communities need a little bit more of a hands-on touch and someone to look in the eyes, to feel trusting, and to also ask questions and better understand the information so that they can get the kind of outcome that we're looking for. So I would just, you know, emphasize the importance of that from me personally.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just in the draft of the actual request for statement of interest, on page two, there was a part that I, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding it, or maybe there's a word that needs to be added. Under the eligibility criteria on the fourth bullet, the second sentence says, "This is about proposing organizations must be able to demonstrate an organizational ability to manage significant grant and/or loan funds. This does not preclude organizations that do have said experience from applying." Should that be "do not," or are we saying it's okay if you've gotten grants before?
I think that should be "do not." I think that's just an oversight of that word.
Okay, thank you. Because I think the intent was to provide that technical assistance.
Right.
And like you were saying, maybe even connect them with other people who would have expertise. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yep, great.
I love this, and like Laura, I was fortunate enough to be on the capital grants, but we were representing council on that. And so my questions are kind of coming from some of the things that cropped up from there. And I was wondering if in the LOI or in the ask that we have for the LOI, if there was a suggested, like, minimum and maximum ask? And if there's not, that's fine. I can imagine that there would be a significant number of, like, lower amounts on the one hand, right? So there would be a lot to go through, so I don't know if there was any sense of, you know, if it's a capital grant, you know, they ask sort of like, we want all $3 million, or we'd like a million dollars, and it's sort of like, that's sort of where we're at. But I could see, because there is a lot of interest, I'm just wondering if any suggestions or any discussion by staff had been about minimums, and it may not be that that's where you want to go, and that's fine. I just was curious about that.
Yeah, we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, because then mine's slightly
I was just going to say, yeah, there has been a lot of conversation on that, and we suspect that we could get some things that might be like actual landscape business, I want a lawnmower to do that, and a lot of those kind of things, we're hoping will be the next stage of whatever bigger support service initiative is pulled together. So we're going to still want to get those in, and this is where I think this process helps out, where we'll still be able to keep those, and if people are bigger initiatives that are going to be helping smaller businesses in the support services, that can have an instant, you know, client base right there, because people might be out there, it might not be appropriate for that type of small thing in this grant process at this point, but it might make total sense once whatever concept we get in and they're doing, say, small business loans, then we provide that money to provide that service to them, and they're instantly hooked in. So it kind of just, again, depends on what we get in.
In that vein, I just have a follow-up question, because it's kind of, it goes in there with sort of like having, being able to work as a connector essentially, and to maybe a match type of thing, like, oh, this is a larger entity that wants to bring in other businesses under its wing and partner. Does that count for startups? The thing that I was noting with some of the requirements were like, you know, if available, give us three years' worth of your, you know, your backup, right, of your bonafides. What if it's a startup? Is there room in here for someone who's saying, I have a business plan, but I don't have a business yet? Is that something that could be accounted for in here? Or is that, does that too sort of go into like, well, and let's see how we can partner you?
Well, it is, and so some of the language, we didn't go into it specifically, but we talked about the targeted small business program and working with companies or businesses or whatever to help them through that process of certification, that's all within that program. So those startups, they go through that process, they kind of work through providing those kind of essential information, if not, if you don't have it, to help you build it up and become even somewhat some financial literacy aspects to help develop becoming a certified, you know, targeted small business. So although we're not requiring that, we are saying that we will help a business that needs that assistance go through that process.
I do have one more question, I'm sorry. I noted a good chunk of this, and it may be allotted in different ways depending on what the applications are, but are for like larger capital expenditures, right? The potential of brick and mortar, of getting land, etc. But one of the things that I noticed in the survey that came out from ASTIG, the number one problem that most of the underestimated businesses have is rent, right? And so is there a place for OpEx requests? Because it seems to me if somebody can say, if I can lock in a long-term lease and not have to worry about that, then I can attend to my business without having to actually worry about getting the land, buying the thing, you know, all of that. So I'm just wondering, is that something also, because I think that that goes so well into the data that ASTIG found?
Yeah, that's also in part of it, yeah.
Yeah, if I can maybe just elaborate and take a step back and focus in on what we're looking for here, because this, as Redmond said, the stage at which an individual business may say, I need help with inventory, or rent, or marketing, whatever that is, that's probably one step removed from this one. So what we're looking at this one is kind of a framework, okay? So we've got two categories, the physical space. The physical space isn't really physical space for an individual business. We're talking about physical space for business hubs, collaboration spaces, so this could be a space that has a commercial kitchen and maybe vendor space for five or six retailers. Doesn't need to be defined who those retailers are right now, but you're creating a framework, and the idea is that individual businesses will come and go over time, but this system is there to help small businesses over the long haul. So that's the physical space piece. It's really looking at collaborative spaces, not spaces designed for an individual business in this moment in time. And then that second program are those business support programs. That's exactly what you're talking about. Maybe it's a program to help subsidize rent. Maybe it's a program that provides low-interest financing to acquire inventory, could be technical assistance. It's contracting with an accounting firm to provide services, or a website designer to provide services to a group of businesses. So we're looking through this program to create systems and places for multiple businesses to benefit from. And then once those programs are executed, say we contract with organization X to run a revolving loan program, that's when individual businesses will apply. And we know that's going to be a little confusing out of the gate here, which is one of the different things that we're recommending that we do with this one compared to the nonprofit capital grant program, which was a little more straightforward, is an open house. So after we issue this, we let it sit out for a week or two, and then we have an open house where we can work through some of those questions, whether it's an individual business saying, where do I fit in here, or it's a larger organization that has questions about, you know, what's the minimum grant or maximum grant.
Thank you, that's really helpful, but thanks.
So I guess, next steps for the council at this point would be to kind of, you know, are there any recommendations of changes, or any, or are we ready to say to the staff, thumbs up? Yes, or no, sorry, and then?
And we will add the nod.
Yes, with that one change, thank you, Councilor Burgess. And then, it would now be a good time for us to even identify who might be from the council, that would be the representative, so I see the memo says two, and I would, thank you, I want to be one of them. Anyone else has interest?
I definitely have interest.
Interest, yes, but not like that. Yeah, the only thing I will say is, just know that whoever is on this, look at some of the organizations you're a part of that might apply, make sure, you know, there's no conflict of interest, but other than that, who would like to be a part of this? Okay? All right?
I mean, willing to, yeah. So would maybe this be something to sit on and think about until the next meeting? We're not going to start the review process tomorrow, so that might be something to...
I think the next meeting would probably be fine, but the councillor or councillors probably want to be a part of that open house, so you can hear some of those initial discussions too. We don't have that scheduled yet, so we could definitely put it after your next meeting.
Yep, all right. So we'll just have this, just to identify those individuals that will be from the council representative. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
All right. We're going to bring up USG to give us some reports. And welcome to both of you.
Hi, council. So we just have four announcements here. Starting with, election season is starting for USG, and then we're going to have our student elections open up March 27th through the 29th, and then a group of USG members are visiting the Capitol in Des Moines tomorrow.
Yeah, awesome. And then USG just passed a bill that would allow students to have mental health days, so that'll be enacted within the next semester. And then last Wednesday, multiple USG members attended the local high school organized walkout in protest of the current anti-LGBTQ legislation in the state legislature. Keaton and I were there, and we ran into Mayor Teague and multiple Johnson County supervisors, and so we just wanted to update you guys on that.
Thank you.
Thank you both, all right. And council, we'll save our updates on boards and assignments and commissions until our formal meeting. With that, we will be...
I was just, go ahead, I was waiting to see what you were going to say.
Yeah, we're going to actually, yeah, we're going to actually be adjourned.
Oh, so you don't want to come back to the council updates or sign boards? USG did at the end.
We'll do that as an end of the formal. It's included, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Yes, I know, I know, I know.
................................................................................................................................................ Welcome.
Welcome, yeah, all right. Well, thanks for having me. My name's Steve Grismore. I'm a longtime resident of Iowa City. I've been here since 1979. I live on Abbey Lane on the west side of town, and I'm here concerned about the narrowing of our street.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, that is item nine B on our agenda today.
Yes. Should I sit down?
Yes, we'll be back. Yep, yes, thank you. Sometimes it's a little confusing, we get it. Anyone else want to speak on an item that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one, we're going to move on to item number eight, which is planning and zoning matters. Eight A is rezoning North Dodge Street and North Scott Boulevard. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 3.87 acre of property located south of the North Dodge Street and North Scott Boulevard, intersection from commercial office zone to community commercial zone with a planned development overlay for approximately 2.05 acres, and to low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay for approximately 1.83 acres. And can I get a motion to give second consideration?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Dunn.
All right, moved by Alter, seconded by Dunn. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Item nine is going to be regular formal agenda items. Nine A is the sale of 2021 Taylor Drive, resolution authorized in conveyance of a single-family home located at 2021 Taylor Drive. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome Tracy Heishu.
All right. Hi, I'm here for the conveyance of 2023, sorry, 2021 Taylor Drive. As you know, we've had the South District program for a couple of years. We have sold, well, we have rehabilitated and purchased six units. This represents the sale of the fifth unit to an eligible home buyer. We have one remaining that is ready, it's been rehabilitated, it's for sale right now. We purchased this duplex back in 2021, and you can see by the photos, you can see the bottom photo is the before photo, after rehab is the second, and it's the one on top. The property sustained major fire damage, so the whole unit has been gutted and rehabilitated. The city partnered with Climate Action to provide several energy-efficient improvements. You'll see in the next slide, we've installed solar panels, we added insulation, we upgraded HVAC to an air-source heat pump, and we made several other improvements. This home also benefited from a bunch of community partnerships. We partnered with the Student Built House Program, with the School District, and the Home Builders Association to provide opportunities for our local high school students to learn about the construction trades. They built storage sheds for each home that's in the backyard of each lot. They sighted the home, and then they completed some interior carpentry projects. This home was also the site of the Home Improvement Confidence Course for Women, sponsored by Kirkwood and the Home Builders Association. So it provided opportunity for women who are interested in learning about the construction trades to be part of the project. They worked on flooring and finished carpentry. The home will sell for $155,000. Part of this includes $25,000 through our home down payment assistance, and $35,000 through our rehabilitation. It's a silent mortgage, conditional mortgage. If the owner remains in the home for 10 years, both loans are forgiven. The buyer only needs to finance the remaining amount. So to buy this home, they only need to finance about $95,000 through a private lender. It's a two-bedroom home with a bathroom and then additional living space in the basement. The buyer is a first-time home buyer under 80% median income. She, they have completed the education course and counseling through Horizons. In addition, the buyer grants the city a mortgage to secure the agreement that the home remain owner occupied for 30 years. This is the first resident that was not part of the neighborhood. The home was available for the neighborhood for several months. We opened it up to anybody that was income-eligible to purchase the property. I'm happy to report that we are partnering with Horizons for Intro to Homeownership in order to increase the number of people that'll be eligible, either that have potentially applied and just weren't able to proceed, or are voucher holders that can convert their vouchers into homeownership. We have our first-class...
That was selected on that side because it was the least disruptive to the neighborhood. The project includes a 30-inch trunk sewer, which will connect the west side of Highway 218 to the city's collection system. So it's approximately one-half a mile of pipe that we're putting in. About 400 feet will be trenchless under the Highway 218. The work is within right-ofways and easements, some permanent easements, some temporary construction easements. The project will utilize an existing right-of-way and the existing 20-foot-wide permanent easement along the south side of Abbey Lane from Kiwanis Park to Mormon Trek Boulevard. Permanent easements and temporary construction easements, and the highway right-of-way will be used west of Mormon Trek Boulevard. Abbey Lane will be reconstructed after reconnecting private services and the restoration of the street pavement, driveway aprons, sidewalk. We'll be updating curb ramps with this project and some other public utilities, including some minor water main reconfiguration of valving and hydrants. The areas east of Mormon Trek Boulevard will have sodding. Some of the areas west of Mormon Trek Boulevard will have sod. A lot of it past the little horseshoe there that's on the village, that will have seeding. And some of that seeding will have to occur in the spring of 2024. So one of the things that we spent a lot of time figuring out is how to accommodate the residents and the owners in the corridor. So we have, in addition to instructing the contractor to backfill each day and to work with residents, getting them in and out of their driveways, we're also restricting the contractor to a 500-foot limit of disruption. So they're only going to be able to pave 500 feet at a time. That's one of the biggest time periods when we cause disruption to the neighborhood is when we go to repave. There's three to seven days when the concrete needs to cure, and so we wanted to make sure that we're not repaving the whole street all at once. So we're going to put that into segments. Another really good thing for the neighborhood on both sides of Mormon Trek is the local collection sewer that's there now will be abandoned and filled. So a lot of the neighbors have a manhole lid in their yard. Those will be abandoned below grade, and they won't be visible to the neighborhood anymore. So that's a real nice benefit to them. One of the impetus of this project is obviously to promote development on the west side of Highway 218, south of Roerit Road and north of Highway 1, so that, I'm just showing the southwest district, there's nothing particular. This was presented at a different meeting for that. But I want to press upon the council, this is from the 2011 Sewer System Master Plan, that this pipe, which is located right here on this drawing, will get extended and have collection serving it all the way out to Kansas Avenue. So this is decades' worth of development that is contingent on us getting this sewer underneath the highway. It includes much of the future 965 corridor, which will be part of Iowa City eventually. So one of the things that happens in design is iterative. We don't end up with the design on day one that we want. We work through that. So we try to have informational meetings with the owners and residents and those that are interested from the public at different milestones. So we had a 30% meeting, like I said, in May last year, and we had a 60% design meeting in July. And at that time, we were primarily concerned with the route that we were going to take and how the trunk sewer was going to operate. We hadn't gotten to all the details of how the street was going to be redesigned, how the intersections were going to work, all those kinds of things. Those are usually details that come later on. You don't want to spend a lot of the consultant's time putting all those details together before you figure out where you're going to put the sewer and how that's going to work. So when it was determined last late summer that we really went to a complete reconstruction on Abbey Lane, so there was, again, four different alternatives with routes and different things that we were analyzing throughout that time period, but it became clear that we were going to take out 80%, 90% of the concrete on Abbey Lane. And so we decided in the fall to have a third public information meeting, which was not part of our original plan, but really felt like we needed to reach back out to the public, the owners and the residents, to tell them that we were going to have a change in the sense that the standard roadway width for a residential street is 28 feet wide. And so we wanted to be able to interact with them, and so we had the meeting in late November, and then asked them to give us comments into the middle of December before we proceeded with the final design. This standard roadway width, this is our residential, local residential roadway width, which is 28 feet with parking on both sides or 26 feet with parking on one side. So an interesting thing, though, is that this Abbey Lane was originally named Aber Avenue. It was 36 feet wide, just like Aber is on the other side of Kiwanis Park. It was intended as an arterial connection between Sunset Street and Mormon Trek Boulevard. Well, obviously, that never happened. When Kiwanis Park was built, the road was never connected through. So when it became apparent that we were going to have a complete street reconstruction, we decided to go with our normal standard residential width of 28 feet. All of the streets that connect to Abbey, Dolan, Kai, and Burry are all 28 feet wide. So this project, the sewer, as well as the reconstruction of the corridors that we're going through, meets several strategic plan objectives in our strategic plan. First of all, mobility to design, maintain complete streets that are comfortable and safe for all users, and grow and prioritize bike and pedestrian accommodations. It also supports the future development, as I said, on the west side of Highway 218, which meets one of the economic objectives. There's other benefits to having the standard roadway width. This is not the reason that the standard roadway width was used. 28 feet is our standard. So these are just extra ancillary things that are also beneficial for using that 28-foot width. So first is there's a lower cost of construction when we're actually constructing it, eight-foot less of concrete. There's also a lot of reduced maintenance over the lifecycle, less area to plow, less area to seal, less area to maintain if the concrete has an issue. There's reduced materials and less impervious surfaces. Those support both goals in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, as well as the Strategic Plan, as I mentioned before. We also have looked for different ways to slow traffic down, and we've tried many different traffic calming methods around the city. One of the concepts is the fact that narrower streets with parking on both sides is going to equate to lower vehicular speeds on that road. And so this standard width of the street, it supports the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists and vehicles by promoting traffic calming and slower speeds. So one of the things that we heard from residents, several residents were very concerned about reducing the width of the street. There was also residents that were very supportive of having that narrower width, and so it's not universal across the board that all the owners and residents were in agreement about that. Regardless, it is our standard, 28 feet or 26 feet. There was several other things that we heard. We heard a lot from the neighborhood about how important their trees are. It's a beautiful neighborhood, large trees shaded. It's a gorgeous corridor. And so one of the things about having an increased parkway, four foot on each side, as the trees in the neighborhood are aging out, it's really going to give us a lot of opportunities to have a more diverse canopy and tree selection when we're going to plant new street trees, either on the north parkway or the south parkway. Several of the neighbors also expressed their concern about fall leaf storage. The parkway right now is very narrow, and so that extra space in the parkway is going to give more storage for leaf storage, which often is pouring out into the street or into the sidewalk. The last thing about the increased parkway, and this supports a lot of discussions that we've had as staff, as well as your objectives that you've put into the strategic plan, as well as our complete streets policy, is that that larger buffer space, that more parkway, is going to create more safety between the vehicles and the road and pedestrians and bicyclists that are using the sidewalk? Whoa, really touchy. So one thing that came up after we had submitted plans to the clerk and set the public hearing, we heard a lot of concern about parking for the park and how turnaround at the end of the park was going to work. And so we actually worked with the consultant and changed our plans in that meantime to make sure that we had a transition, we're not taking out concrete that doesn't need to be taken out. And so as you can see from this depiction, we basically left that 36-foot-wide road at the end to allow for parking and turning around. The estimated construction cost is $3,475,000. This is funded by revenue bonds. So our schedule, we are looking to move forward, hopefully with bidding this month and awarding early next month. We have a set start date in mid-May with a substantial completion date in the middle of November. That would be the point where the corridor would be completely reusable for the public. Those items that would remain for the spring of '24 would be those areas of seeding. It would be past the end of September. We can't seed, so we'd have to wait till the following spring to do some of that seeding. That's all I have. Thanks to Strands and Associates for their design on this project and their hard work in pivoting many times and helping us get this design where it's at today.
Any questions? Sure.
If I can make one clarification, Mayor, we originally planned to fund this project with revenue bonds, but we're actually going to be using wastewater fund balance to do that. So just the source of funding change, the dollar amount's the same.
Okay.
So the late change or late lack of change to the 36-foot by Kiwanis Park, that didn't impact the project's overall budget?
No.
Just it was a matter of saying, here's the need, and we're able to...
Yeah, it really didn't change, didn't change the budget that much. It was a relatively small section of the roadway. We're not installing sewer there, so we didn't need to, the end of the sewer is west of Burry, so we didn't really need to be over in that area, and it didn't really make sense to change it. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, you can come to the podium at this time. There is a, yeah, this will be your time. There is a sign-in sheet that is on the podium that you'll need to sign. There are also stickers in the back of the room that you can fill out ahead of time as well. We'll ask that you give your name and the city you're from, and then we ask that you keep your, well, I'll allow up to three minutes for comments. Welcome.
Hi, let's try again.
Yes.
My name's Steve Grismore. Resident of Iowa City. I have my sticker in here. So I agree with this gentleman. It's a beautiful street. It's a beautiful neighborhood. My wife and I bought our house 12 years ago on a beautiful street in a beautiful neighborhood, and the street's 36 feet wide. I'd like it to stay 36 feet wide. That's what I bought. I mean, obviously, it's the city's street, but that was the aesthetic that I like. Plus, talking about the park, the street's only two and a half blocks long. There might be some people that are afraid of speeders. I don't see it. I live there. It's not true. It's two and a half blocks. You can only go so fast, trust me. There are some people that go up the hill that go a little fast once in a while, but overall, the street's not a dangerous street. Matter of fact, at 36 feet wide, when you're riding your bike, which I ride a lot in the summer, it's much safer because I don't have to worry about cars. There's plenty of room to always pass the people on the street. So those are a couple just basic aesthetic things about living there that I really like. The other thing is, is I totally agree with, you know, your place in the sewer, there's going to be a lot of inconvenience. My wife and I are both music people. I'm a retired professor in the University of Iowa School of Music. I teach a lot of lessons at my house. My wife teaches a lot of lessons at our house. Some students park in our driveway, but we also have parking on the street. And I have, in the basement of my house, I have a big music room where I have band rehearsals, and people show up, and there may be five or six cars parked on my street, including the mayor's. He's been in my basement. He knows what I'm talking about. And so, you know, this is the kind of thing that we do there, and it would just be nice to not have to deal with that. Plus, I don't know how it affects my taxes. I guess they're not supposed to change anything like that. I don't know. But an extra four feet of parking to mow, I don't have issues with raking my leaves on the space we have. It seems to have worked fine for my last 12 years. We've never had any problems.
So the late change, or late lack of change to the 36-foot by Kiwanis Park, that didn't impact the project's overall budget?
No.
Just it was a matter of saying, here's the need and we're able to...
Yeah, it really didn't change, didn't change the budget that much. It was a relatively small section of the roadway. We're not installing sewer there, so we didn't need to... The end of the sewer is west of Burry, so we didn't really need to be over in that area, and it didn't really make sense to change it. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, you can come to the podium at this time. There is a, yeah, this will be your time. There is a sign-in sheet that is on the podium that you'll need to sign. There's, there are also stickers in the back of the room that you can fill out ahead of time as well. We'll ask that you give your name and the city you're from. And then we ask that you keep your, well, I'll allow up to three minutes for comments. Welcome.
Hi, let's try again.
Yes.
My name's Steve Grismore. Resident of Iowa City, I have my sticker in here. So I agree with this gentleman, it's a beautiful street, it's a beautiful neighborhood. My wife and I bought our house 12 years ago on a beautiful street in a beautiful neighborhood, and the street's 36 feet wide. I'd like it to stay 36 feet wide, that's what I bought. I mean, obviously, it's the city street, but that was the aesthetic that I like. Plus, talking about the park, the street's only two and a half blocks long. There might be some people that are afraid of speeders. I don't see it, I live there. It's not true. It's two and a half blocks, you can only go so fast, trust me. There are some people that go up the hill that go a little fast once in a while, but overall, the street's not a dangerous street. Matter of fact, at 36 feet wide, when you're riding your bike, which I ride a lot in the summer, it's much safer because I don't have to worry about cars, there's plenty of room to always pass the people on the street. So those are a couple just basic aesthetic things about living there that I really like. The other thing is, is I totally agree with, you know, your place in the sewer, there's going to be a lot of inconvenience. My wife and I are both music people. I'm a retired professor in the University of Iowa School of Music. I teach a lot of lessons at my house, my wife teaches a lot of lessons at our house. Some students park in our driveway, but we also have parking on the street. And I have, in the basement of my house, I have a big music room where I have band rehearsals, and people show up, and there may be five or six cars parked on my street, including the mayor's. He's been in my basement, he knows what I'm talking about. And so, you know, this is the kind of thing that we do there, and it would just be nice to not have to deal with that. Plus, I don't know how it affects my taxes, I guess they're not supposed to change anything like that, I don't know, but an extra four feet of parking to mow, I don't have issues with raking my leaves on the space we have. It seems to have worked fine for my last 12 years, we've never had any problems. I mean, a few leaves in the street, I guess, I don't know. So, you know, it's, I understand the kind of idea of the 28-foot thing, but I just, I think it's kind of unfair to us who've been there forever to all of a sudden have this change made. And I understand there were some, I didn't know about this in the first run, we heard about it, and then we all started talking more about it. So in fairness to the city, I think maybe some people were trying to tell us, but you know how that kind of thing can happen. So anyway, yeah, those are my basic concerns. You know, it's just unfortunate, and I just feel it'll kind of devalue what we have now. That's just my opinion. A lot of great neighbors, some of them are here, I've got to know them all, we have a great neighborhood there. And not everybody agrees with us, but the majority of people on the street do agree with us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this topic? Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. My name is Mary McQuaidus, and I'm also a resident of Abbey Lane. And I'll have to look at my notes because my palms are sweating, and...
And if you can use the mic, please.
Oh, certainly. I'm here to appeal to city council to also not narrow Abbey Lane after the sewer reconstruction project. We all agree that the sewer needs to happen, that's not the issue, but as Steve mentioned, we bought our homes, we love our neighborhood, and we bought into it as it is. And regarding this project, I would say that there was not much transparency as far as the street narrowing was concerned. We received an orange postcard dated November 21st of 2022 saying that there would be a Zoom meeting on November 30th regarding the sewer project. There was not one word mentioned in that postcard about the street being narrowed. Also, there were five or maybe six people that attended that Zoom meeting, and I think it was because we had heard about the sewer project, had no idea that the sewer, that the street narrowing was coming up. So those five or six, of those five or six people that were there, my husband was one of them, and we started talking about the street narrowing. And it's like, where is that coming from? You know, our street is unique in that at the end of our street is Kiwanis Park, and that park is highly utilized, and there is not a parking lot on our side of the park. A lot of people park on the street to attend the park. And so what you're doing is taking away parking that is used by the people that are going to the park. So anyway, what we have is working for us, and it's working for us well. And also, as Steve mentioned, and four weeks ago at your last city council meeting, I believe in your packet, there was a petition that was signed by 20, it was either 20 or 21 people. There are 23 addresses on Abbey Lane, is my understanding. I may have that maybe off by one or two, but 21 people had signed that petition. So obviously, the large majority of people do not want the street narrowed. And so it's like, it looks like this is what's happening according to those plans, but I am appealing to you, and the first two rows of people that are sitting here are from Abbey Lane and are in support of the street not being narrowed, and so are the majority of the other people that aren't here. So as Steve mentioned regarding bikes, bikes use the street to get to the trail that is also in Kiwanis Park. And I have 13 seconds left. So how much concrete savings will there be? Each and every driveway will have to be elongated if the street is narrowed on both sides. So that's a lot of concrete going on right there. So anyway...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Kevin Watkins, I live on Abbey Lane also. Thank you very much for the chance to speak with the council again. I'm here to talk about the Rarrett South Trunk Sanitary Sewer Project, and in particular about proposed narrowing of Abbey Lane from 36 feet to 28 feet. As you've heard, most of the people on our street are against that. Indeed, as Joe said, there are some people in favor, but more than 85% are against narrowing the street. So there are some on both sides, but it's very off balance there. None of the property owners voiced any resistance to the proposed placement of the sewer upgrade, that's important, but we were quite frustrated about the announcement of the change in the street dimensions at a very late part of the planning process. I understand things change and so forth, and it's a difficult job. We appreciate the effort of the city staff dealing with all that, but it came up November 30th, kind of a tough time of year to get things worked out with holidays and bad weather then and so forth, but we did start to talk to people in the neighborhood and it became clear that most of them were against it. We've got a lot of bike traffic there, and we like the idea of a little more space between cars and the bikes and moving cars and so forth. Getting closer to each other is bound to lead to some troubles. We've addressed the parking at the Kiwanis Park on the east end of Abbey Lane, and we do appreciate that at least they've changed the plan to allow, to leave the street widened there. But there are other reasons, those are listed in the previous letter we sent to you four weeks ago. We don't wish to delay this project at all, but we wish you would consider our input and concerns and send out the bid without the stipulation to narrow the street, or at least investigate it further. Now, one of our residents could not be here this evening, he was trying to be here, but has a kids' event up in you and I. A couple of things he was concerned about are whether this narrowing seems to be a cost-saving measure. It's not clear to most of us if it comes out to save actual money or not, and if you take the surface area for the driveways and so forth, that's over 20% of the eight-foot strip that would be saved by shaving it off the street. There's a lot of other concerns about that, and whether we've shifted the cost of taking care of that
Thank you.
area to...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one online or in person, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Harmson.
Second, Burgess.
All right, council discussion.
This obviously is in my district and my neighborhood, very, very close to where I live, so this is really close to my heart, and I've heard, I know a lot of the people that live on this street, and I have been on that street many times. I have a lot of concerns about this, obviously not concerns for the need for the new sewer line, although I do have concerns that it was quoted that it's going to promote development on the other side of Mormon Trek, the west side of Mormon Trek. But my concern is that this is of a detriment to those folks in the existing neighborhood on Abbey Lane, as one of the residents eloquently spoke about how, well, a couple of them did, that this is, when they bought this home, they've lived there many years, and they love this wide street. And I know we've heard from some of our council members about wide streets leading to speed, but obviously, it's technically a dead-end street, there isn't speeding there. These residents have not come to us and requested speed humps or speed study. It's not a concern. So what I'm trying to say is that I believe that it should be left as 36 feet. It just seems absurd to me to lessen a street that's been 36 feet all these years, and it has surrounding streets, where we're told that Abra Avenue is 36 feet, Teg Drive, which is also very close, is 36 feet, and of course, there's Mormon Trek, that's very wide, I don't know how wide it is, but it's four lanes. There are wide streets around there, I just do not see the need at this time to decrease the width. And so I appeal to my fellow councilors to listen to these constituents.
Thanks for your comments, Pauline, and thank you, everyone, for coming and for those who submitted their letter and the petition to us last month. This is hard because it's change, and everyone who lives in their neighborhood, you know, buys into what is there at the time that they buy into it. And our challenge up here is to be thinking about not just those of you who are going to be impacted right now, but the community down the road. And so the, both literally and figuratively, in time and in space down the road, this street will be there for decades, and we have had a policy of consistently narrower streets in residential areas for a long time, for very good reasons. And I think, you know, what we're trying to provide here with this project is the opportunity for brand-new sidewalks, brand-new driveway aprons, brand-new pavement in the street itself, sod in the additional parking area. And I think that will be an enhancement for the neighborhood, as well as the addition of street trees. And staff, please correct me if I'm misstating anything, because I see some heads shaking there with the residents that there's not going to be new pavement. So Joe, is that, can you maybe clarify?
Joe, you're going to have to come up to the microphone, please.
Thank you. So all of the sidewalks are not being replaced.
Okay.
Only those sidewalks where the services would cross or were redoing the curb ramps. Much of the sidewalk will remain in the exact same place that it's in and the same condition that it's in.
Got it. So the increase in the space is coming between the sidewalk and the road?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that misunderstanding, and thank you for those of you who are paying better attention. I still am in favor of narrowing the street because it is, that is our policy and it is our plan. And I think if we want to stick with our commitment to climate action, if we want to reduce the impact on the environment of additional impervious surfaces, if we want to reduce the heat island effect, if we want to provide more green space that is already in the public right-of-way, this whole project is in the public right-of-way and easements that are already there. So I think it is also one of those times, it's just really tough when, you know, we try to do a good thing and make sure people know what's going on, and then it's maybe, you know, it's hard to know when you get a postcard what all might be handled or discussed at that meeting. And it's on public property. And so, you know, our obligation is not to provide maximum parking on a public street, but to comply with our plans that have been created with a lot of public input over a lot of time and deliberation, and to try and stick with those because we have, they're based on good, solid reasoning. I know that change is hard, and I know that narrowing the street would be difficult, but I am in favor of it because it is in line with our strategic plan and our climate action plan.
One of the things I looked at when I was looking at this was, you know, because I'm new, said that we have a city policy of 28 feet, so I sort of tested that theory out. And indeed, what I found was, in my neighborhood, neighborhoods around other parks in the city, around schools, streets were 28 feet or less, and just knowing what it's like living on my street is not a burden. In fact, the closest street to me that's 36 or right around that width is Scott Boulevard, which is a major thoroughfare with very wide lanes. Even some of the other sort of like musketeen is right around that 28 feet. So that's actually a fairly decent, decent width. And so that's one of the things, and I agree with the points that Councilor Burgess made. And I get that change is not desirable, and, you know, it can be upsetting, but again, the policy does make sense. And I think if Counselor Thomas was here, if I could channel him briefly, I think, you know, he would talk about the idea of the narrowing and the traffic calming is to prevent future problems, not necessarily always in response to an existing problem. I think that's a fair thing I've heard him say from up here from before. So just for those reasons too, I, while I take, you know, into consideration everybody's input, I think that this makes sense as proposed at the 28-foot width.
The only thing that I would add is that I have been listening for the multiple times that your advocacy, you know, that you've done through letters, as well as here in person multiple times, and I really have put myself in your position. What would it be like if I got a postcard and I wasn't quite sure of what it was, you know, indicating, or that there were future things that came out? I would absolutely be upset. And you're going to hate me. But I also recognize, as Councilor Harmson and Councilor Burgess have said, there are, there's going to be parking on both sides still. It does go into a park, this is not going to be a major thoroughfare that's been narrowed so that people are going to continue to go speeding. I think that there's many components of this that do, they fit the plan. And going from 36 feet to 28, there's still parking on both sides, and I did write it down as a legitimate question, which maybe staff can answer. How is, how does narrowing the street take away parking if there's parking on both sides? Does it?
We, there are many areas of the street that are restricted by code already. So where there's crosswalks or curb ramps
Sure.
within five feet of hydrant, there are several hydrants, inside the intersections, the T-intersections, you can't park there, those are restricted already.
They're already there, right.
The only thing that we're signing as no parking will be the north side of Abbey between Dolan and Mormon Trek, and there'll be a small part of the first parcel just east of Mormon Trek on the south side that'll also be signed no parking. And the reason for that is to make sure that people that are turning right off of Dolan and turning right off of Mormon Trek onto Abbey can make those movements safely. So there's a process of laying out site triangles and figuring out where people can see. So really, we're talking about two cars on the north side and not even, not even a whole car length on the south side of Abbey, all the way on the far end by Mormon Trek, not down by the park at all.
Thank you. Like Counselor Burgess, I appreciate the detailed answer. Anyway, I think my counselors have said why I'm in favor of this. I also do very much understand that you are not happy that you bought the houses where you did because of the street. But 28 feet, I truly, it is wide enough for parking on both sides, and it goes into a dead end, and I, and yes, it's utilized because people love the park. I honestly think that this is a change that has to happen because it fits with the rest of how Iowa City is looking at its paved roads, how it has used them, how it has constructed them, and that this is in line with this. I fully understand, they're not doing, they're not doing the narrowing for the sake of saying, let's get everything uniform, it's because there's this opportunity to put it in line with the strategic plan while also preparing for the future in the next decades by laying the sewer. So I will be in favor of this.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
You can go. Okay.
This is something that I am very conflicted on, and I probably won't have a decision until I absolutely have to make it, but I want to share kind of what's going through my mind. You know, I think one of the largest things that we struggle with in democracies is balancing the interests of individuals with the needs of the community, and the more we think about it, the more our consciousness as a country and as a community develops the needs of the planet. I think that throughout this process, the city has done a good job, doesn't mean it couldn't be better. I think more contact and more, you know, ensuring that there is a constant line of communication and understanding on all parties about the direction of where the project is going is important. important, as well as the fact that we've taken into account, or pardon me, the staff has taken into account, a lot of the concerns of the staff, has made it so that the end of the street is going to be maintaining a larger footprint to account for turning and more parking near the park. At the same time, we have an obligation to be stewards of our community and do the things that you guys want us to do. So, we are... We do have a major conflict in that regard. You have unified your neighborhood in a truly commendable way to try to get something that is important to you done. And as an organizer, I can give you nothing but commendation for that. And I would ask that regardless of what happens today, you continue that communication with the city so that you can advocate for the goals of your neighborhood, and those things can be achieved. But as I understand it, our community has major goals towards addressing the climate crisis. Concrete is, I believe, the number-one producer of CO2 emissions in the modernized world. And that is a real concern of mine. I also share a lot of the concerns of the other councilors that are planning on voting in favor of this in terms of consistency with the rest of our priorities, as well as the rest of the city's planning and the maintenance of the ability for folks to park. But I am left at this position of major conflict in terms of, is this the right thing to do for the community, or is this going to sort of cause a major harm to folks in the neighborhood? And I suppose that's where I stand right now. It is really, for me, going to be something that I'm thinking about until we have to make the vote.
Yeah. So, one, this sewer project is a major project. We're talking about $3.4 million. And I want to say thanks to everyone that's been a part of ensuring that that process is done in the best way possible. I think I heard even the residents say that they have no concerns about that part of the project, which is amazing. I mean, that's what we're talking about majority here, is the sewer project. What I will say to the residents, as I hear you loud and clear, I heard that there's 21 people that signed the petition, and those unified voices do resonate with me. I... Like Councilor Taylor, these are our neighbors. I live on the west side. I love the west side. But from where I sit, I have to look at the big picture and all of the picture. I have to hear the voices of the people that are before me, mainly not in support of the narrowing of this street. And I know that there are some voices out there that say, "Go ahead and narrow it." I also have to consider, and I'd say this a lot, the end in mind. Climate action is real. We are in a climate crisis. And I understand we can rationalize and say there's only... This is just a big part of a huge city. I hear that. I understand that. What we're doing as a city is trying to be really, really conscientious of long term, and not only just now, how that affects our generations to come. And so, it is a hard decision because when I see people before me that is advocating for something with such a unified voice, and then I have to step back and be non-biased. I absolutely... You heard Steve say... I've been in his basement. He's a great musician. I know you all already know that. He's a phenomenal musician. It's a great neighborhood, absolutely. But when I look at what is being proposed in the narrowing of this street, when I think about the end in mind, which is generations and generations from now, I can't help but to support this road going down at 28 from 36. So, I will support this. And this is not to say that I don't hear you all. I do hear you loud and clear, and I do understand your concerns. With that, roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed as 5 to 1. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Second.
Move by Burgess, second, by Alter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6 to 0. 9C is Willow Creek Trail Replacement. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Willow Creek Trail Replacement Project. Establish amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fix in time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And let's see. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Tyler Olson. I'm with the City's Engineering Department.
Great.
And I'll get this presentation started. Okay. So, for the discussion today here, this is the public hearing for the Willow Creek Trail Replacement Project. And this is a trail replacement for the existing Willow Creek Trail section that is running through Willow Creek Park and Kiwanis Park for the most part. It runs from Benton Street to the north and then runs all the way down to Willow Creek Drive, down by the cul-de-sac there. And this project also includes a spur trail that is off of Aberdeen Court. So, largely, this project is a remove and replace for the existing trail. Right now, what's out there is an existing asphalt trail. And given its condition, it's time for a replacement trail. And this trail is going to be entirely made out of concrete as opposed to what is now asphalt. So, it will go back nearly in the same footprint as the existing trail. There's going to be a couple minor changes here and there to accommodate new... Just like ADA compliance. But for the most part, it's going to be sitting in the same location. To kind of keep the trail area around Willow Creek Park and Kiwanis Park, we're going to be breaking this up into three major phases. So, this would be like Phase 1 would be remove the trail, replace the trail, then move on to the second phase, and then so on and so forth as we go down. So, we're trying to keep as many of the trails open as we can, but also the connecting trails to it as well, maintain pedestrian flow there. And as part of this project, we're also looking at the sidewalk connections that go to the Willow Creek Trail. And these are at the intersections with Teague Drive, and they include three different intersections. The first two at Flanagan Court and Woodbury Court, these two are going to be remove and replace. And this is to facilitate ADA compliance. This is the American Disabilities Act. These curb ramps and the crosswalks are not meeting all the ADA standards. So, what we're going to do is, as part of this project, as part of the trail connections, it'll be remove and replace back in the same footprint. So, we're just updating the sidewalk and the slopes corrected. The one change there is going to be at Aberdeen Court. Currently, there is no connection from the south side of Teague Drive, where the trail's located, where the spur trail's located, and to the north side where Aberdeen Court is at. So, we're going to add a sidewalk crosswalk at that location. And as part of this construction project, each of the intersections that are going to be reconstructed will be done at half at a time. So, we'll be taking out half of the intersection, remove and replace, and then go to the other side of the intersection, remove and replace. So, that way, we're still maintaining vehicle flow to each of those neighborhoods. How this project relates to the strategic plan is largely with the mobility part of the impact areas. And some of the strategies that are being addressed with this project, there is the design and maintain of complete streets that are comfortable and safe for all users. So, again, this kind of reflects back to improving the sidewalk connections so that way they're ADA compliant, and then also adding a street sidewalk crossing at Aberdeen Court. And then the other strategy that applies to this project will be growing and prioritizing the bike pedestrian accommodations. So, right now, this trail is fairly popular with people in the neighborhood. And the condition of the trail has prompted a number of complaints. And given the condition of the trail, we deem that the trail needs to be removed and replaced there. Trying to do repair work or patching is just not going to yield the results that we're going to be looking for. Again, it's a little bit of the financial aspects of the project. Resuming the construction cost is going to be about $720,500. And the funding is going to be coming out of the city's Capital Projects Fund. For scheduling, if fall goes to plan, we're looking at issuing bid documents tomorrow for contractors to place bids on. We're looking at a bid opening on the end of this month, on the 28th, and then looking at scheduling a ward if all of the bids come in as we get good bids for that, be on April 4th. And overall, we're looking at a construction timeframe between May and September of this year for doing all the work. And then we're looking at as a final completion date, sometime at the end of October this year.
All right. Any questions?
Sorry, Tyler. I did have one really quick clarifying question. I understand, I think, with that connection that's going north to cross onto Aberdeen, I think I heard you say crosswalk. Are these going to be marked or just the curb ramps and like the directional?
It'll be just the curb ramps. It won't have the painted markings.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone from the public would like to address this topic? Say no one online or in person. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Dunn?
Second. Taylor?
All right. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed as 6 to 0. Item 9D is library parking. Ordinances amending Title IX and Title Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 4 and Title Parking Regulations to return library parking to a 20-minute limit. This is second consideration, and staff has requested an expedite in action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Move by Taylor?
Second. Burgess?
Seconded by Burgess. Anyone from the public would like to address this topic? Say no one in person or in line. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passed as 6 to 0. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Dunn?
Second. Alter?
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passed as 6 to 0. Item 9E, Ukraine Resolution. Resolution and continued support of Ukraine sovereignty one year following the illegal and moral invasion of Ukraine by the Russian military, calling for the immediate withdrawal of Russian forces and for peace in Ukrainian sovereign territory. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Dunn?
Second. Alter?
All right. Move by Dunn, seconded by Alter. We're going to have comments by Councilor Dunn at this time.
So, I'd first like to thank my colleagues up here for their work on their advocacy with this issue. Last year, passing a resolution, I believe it was 8022, supporting the Ukrainian people in their fight against the Russian regime. And express also why this issue is so important to me and why I believe that we believe it is important to our community in this moment. Over the last year, I've spent a lot of time with folks in the community and paying attention to the news. And shortly after the invasion of Ukraine in 2022, I was approached by a young Ukrainian woman who was asking me why certain government agencies or other types of entities weren't speaking up about the issues. This is particularly a student who, at the time, when it was a very, very lonely time to be a Ukrainian, when the world thought that Kiev would fall in three days, they felt very alone and very much abandoned by lack of voices. So, while this is simply a statement calling for what is just, we do have folks in our community who are directly affected by this, whose family have a legacy and history in Ukraine, whose family are in Ukraine, who studied in... Who grew up in Ukraine. And ensuring that those people understand that this is an issue, that we're not just going to let go by another year, just be another tragedy, is something that I think is very much in line with what our community values are. I think also understanding the gravity of this moment and understanding the real atrocity, and I want to say a content warning right now for anyone that's watching in the room or online, about what is really happening in Ukraine is important. Rape, murder constituting genocide, murder of civilians, prisoners of war, deliberate state-funded and sanctioned torture of children all across Ukraine, shipping children to Siberia into reeducation camps. Regardless of how you feel about why this war began, it's wrong. What's happening there is wrong. And our community has already stood up for them once. And I believe it's important that we continue to stand up and to show people across the states, across the world, and our community that this is not something that we will sit by on. In addition, I think it's also important that we use this as an opportunity to understand that tragedy and the loss of freedom and democracy is not something that can only happen in Ukraine or in other places. While this conflict is very much about freedom and it is about democracy, it is also a lesson of the power democracy has to unite the world and the necessity of us maintaining it at home. One of the things that I have been keeping with me for the most of this last year is a little pamphlet that I got from a local antique shop called Artifacts. People are probably familiar. It's called "The Documents on the Freedom Train," which is a little weird name. It's from 1947 from the American Heritage Foundation. And I find that faced with a consistent rise of authoritarianism, both in our country and across the world, I think that the nine promises of a good citizen that are on the back of this pamphlet from 1947, right after the fall of fascism in Europe, I think that they're important to recommend or important to remember, especially in these times. And I'd like to share them. One, I will vote at all elections. I will inform myself on candidates and issues, and will use my greatest influence to see that honest and capable officials are elected. I will accept public office when I can serve my community or my country thereby. Two, I will serve on a jury when asked. Three, I will respect and obey the laws. I will assist public officials in preventing crime in the courts and giving evidence. Four, and I find this one a little bit funny, I will pay my taxes understandably, if not cheerfully. Five, I will work for peace but will dutifully accept my responsibilities in times of war and will respect the flag. Six, in thought, expression, and action, at home, at school, and in all of my contacts, I will avoid any group prejudice based on class, race, or religion. Seven, I will support our system of free public education by doing everything I can to improve the schools in my own community. Eight, I will try to make my community a better place in which to live. And nine, I will practice and teach the principles of good citizenship right here. And nine, I will practice and teach the principles of good citizenship right here in my own home. And remember, freedom is everybody's job. I think that these lessons, while maybe a little bit dated in some places and lack some of the more progressive ideas that we typically are finding ourselves in here in our community, serve as an incredible reminder, in the context of what's happening in Ukraine and the tragedies all across the world, that protecting democracy, preserving freedom, does come at a cost. And I would call on my colleagues here to stand together and vote for this resolution to recognize the sovereignty of the Ukrainian people and call for the withdrawal of Russian forces.
I object to this because I am a Ukrainian-American, and I know what's going on out there. The US actually supported the coup in 2014.
One second, I'm going to open up public-
There are three groups of people in Ukraine, not just one. We supported the fascist group in 2014.
One second, I'm going to open up public comment.
I don't believe in this particular idea.
One, one-
I think this is a gemini, I think this is US imperialism.
One second.
And I think this has to stop. And the more we escalate, the more that we're going to have the chance of having nuclear war, more people in Ukraine.
I'm going to, I'm going to open it up.
And I'll tell you right now-
I'm going to open it up.
... there is no business out there, as if Russia had business in Mexico or Cuba.
I respectfully ask you to hold off.
Canada, we have no business. If you want to talk-
I respectfully ask you to hold off.
He's an authoritarian as well. He's not just a flower in the desert. I apologize for coming out here, but I can't stand by and listen to this. People out there, you need to look through and see what this is all about. I appreciate your listening to me. I know that I'm against the rules here. I'll take my slap on the wrist. Please do not go along with this. The US is basically in on this. It's a fascist group that took over Ukraine. It's a rogue government. They overthrew a democratically elected president. We talk about voting, they voted. People in Donbass wanted that president. They basically chased him out with threats to his life, and that's what happened. So the US is pushing and pushing and pushing to take over Ukraine and to attack Russia. And if you don't know this, you don't know what's going on in Ukraine. And I'm sorry for being so emotional, but this is very close to home.
All right. Any questions from council to Councilor Dunn?
No questions, but thank you for drafting-
We'll get to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yes, questions at this time?
I see.
Yes. All right. I'm going to open up the public comment time. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Okay, seeing no one, council discussion.
Just to say thank you, I was happy to work with you on drafting this. And as I was happy to work with our former colleague, Councilor Weiner, when she was here a year ago and did such a nice job putting together our original eloquent and extremely well-done resolution. I do think there is value to this, especially in a day and age where we do see Kremlin propaganda and Putin-esque propaganda that does sort of creep into the conversation. So it's good to let the people of, to remind, one year into this conflict, to let the people of Ukraine know that different bodies around the world are still steadfast in their support. So, thank you.
Just one additional comment that I would have would be, I have a team of students from the University of Iowa who worked with me to put this resolution together in a good and concise way. Couple of members of which are here, Jane Hollish and Nolan Hanson. So I'd like to extend my thanks to them for their assistance with this.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Absolutely.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero. Item number 10 is council appointments. 10A is Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative. Airport, there is one vacant city filler, a six-year term, January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2027. And council discussion.
I think this was just one applicant for this one?
It was just the one, but I actually quite enjoyed reading the application. It was very well, no, very interesting background that I think the notion of being able to apply some of the background this candidate has, albeit in a slightly different, I was going to say genre, that shows my background. But, you know, to be able to apply, thinking about land use and whatnot in service of sort of the betterment of how the airport commission can conduct itself, I think works well.
So, it sounded like we have a majority for appointing Anthony Gentile to the Airport Zoning Commission. Can I get a motion to appoint, please?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Dunn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at six to zero. Item number 11 is announcements of vacancies new. 11A, Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacant city filler, unexpired term, upon appointment through December 31st, 2024. And applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess. Second, Alter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at six to zero. Item 12 is announcements of vacancies previous. 12A is going to be Civil Service Commission, one vacant city filler, unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacant city filler, unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacant city filler, three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacant city filler, unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are on to item number 13, City Council Information.
I was excited to see the invitation for the South District Market Grand Opening. I think we have a meeting before that happens, but I thought I'd mention it now and remind people about that, March 28th. It's just so exciting, that the South District, I'm so impressed with how far they've come in the last few years and the hard work that each and every one of them has done. And I'm just really excited for this market because I've gone to the ones in the summer where they had in the parking lot, and this has sort of developed from that. And in fact, I commented to Angie Jordan at one of them that, oh, it'd be great to have something that's inside. And she said, well, and here it is. And it's going to be fun, as well as, I'll just go ahead and mention her. I hear that Roy San Porter is going to have, one of the cubbyholes, one of the vendors, is going to be her and her soul food. So that's exciting to look forward to that, and many of the other ones that will be a part of that also. So congratulations to them.
Supervisor Porter will be having her open house on this Saturday. And I believe that time, that's what I was trying to look for.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't see.
Starts at noon.
It's at 12:00 noon. That's what I was trying to confirm when my phone went off.
Okay.
I've got something, I've got a couple things. First, Wednesday, March 8th, tomorrow, the Johnson County United Nations Association is going to be holding an event in my neighborhood over by Mercer Park, the Night of a Thousand Dinners, in recognition of, I believe it's Women's History Month. Tickets are $25, $10 for students. You're going to be seeing stuff from Grow Johnson County, Field to Family, and benefiting Great Plains Action and the like. So I'm going to be there, would love to see everyone else. In addition, one of the things that I spoke about when, I guess I came before you during the appointment process, was doing office hours. And so, starting next week, biweekly, I'm going to be hosting office hours for members of the community to come in and speak with me about whatever their issues are, at my office at Old Brick, from about 5:00 to 6:30, 7:00. So folks can join me there if they want to air their grievances or otherwise. So would love to see folks.
Speaking of which, Councilor Burgess and I had a listening post la, just last week?
Yes.
Yes, just last week. And for the, thank you to the people that came out and spoke with us. A lot of the discussion revolved around affordable housing. We had a member of the Local Habitat for Humanity there, and so we got a really nice update on some ongoing and upcoming projects and discussing ways that, you know, that we, the city and Habitat have worked together in different projects and different upcoming things. So it was a really nice conversation. And those are listening posts, I know that just kind of promoting for my fellow counselors who are doing the upcoming ones to the public. Really nice time. I know we had one person come and said, so what's the agenda? And we were like, whatever you want to talk about, that's the agenda. So it is nice to have that sort of opportunity. And Councilor Burgess, you probably have some more stuff to add, perhaps, maybe?
Oh, that was great, great summary, thank you. And also with the Habitat for Humanity, just kind of following up on that, they have a open house on Thursday afternoon over on Indigo Drive, which is in the South District in Iowa City, for a home that they've just completed. And there's a dedication of that house then on Saturday, the 11th, at 10:00 AM. So 2408 Indigo Drive, and we are invited to that as well, plan to attend. And I also just want to take a moment to reflect and thank you all for our discussions in the last couple of meetings. I feel like we've been really respectful and productive. The item we had earlier, I thought, was just an example of the value of our strategic plan and the conversations that we've had around that to kind of help us understand and acknowledge that bigger picture sometimes. So I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge the clarity that I've found, I think particularly recently, with the processes that we've gone through in adopting that and just thinking about things, big picture. So thank you all for that.
I just want to say a large shout out to Successful City of Literature Festival that was last weekend. And we have some amazing writers in the community who are beginning in the first grade and going, and are not even yet in high school. I got to go to the Write Out Loud contest, and it was incredibly cool and humbling, to tell you the truth, because I got to pass out the awards. And to listen to the kids sit there and read their work, it was awesome. That's all I got to say, is like, we have a really strong community of writers and kids who are sort of in there to make their mark. And there were some who were like two-peats, three-peats of having gotten recognition. And I think the main thing is that the City of Literature did a great job of saying, writing isn't just this rarefied thing, it's for everybody. And so it was, it's just amazing to, and each winner was, would the author come up? And it was just the respect that came from just the common language of writing and of putting it forward and putting yourself on the page. It was really, really cool. So, it was an awesome job.
Just want to say thanks to everybody that's been paying attention to everything that's happening at the State House. There's been a lot of advocacy going on. And there's a lot of things that this city also advocate for, and so thanks to our team that does that. Tomorrow, Deputy City Manager, Reven, and I, we'll be heading to Des Moines, and so we'll be spending most of the day there. So there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of advocacy to be had. Also want us to take a step back and just look at some of the positive things that we have within our community. Because I think sometimes we can be so bogged down with some of the bad things that are happening, that we don't agree with or that we are really burdened by. And in this moment, yes, we need to fight like hell, I'll say it. But I think, you know, there needs to also be a little time for some self-care. And I would just encourage people to do a little bit of that if you're feeling that you need it. Other than that, we will go to item number 14, Reports on Items from City Staff, City Manager's Office.
Not tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, and our City Clerk?
Yes, I have something.
Woo-hoo!
I just want to mention that the Community Police Review Board is going to have their annual community forum on April 20th at 5:30, and it'll be held at the Library Meeting Room A.
Thank you. All right, item number 15 is adjournment. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Alter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, and I think I said-
But you meant Taylor.
I meant Burgess.